Welcome to all of you. Before we call the meeting to order, there are several people in the room that I would like to recognize. Former Commissioner Anna Sadler is here today. Former Mayor Renee Cahoon is here this morning. Former Mayor Bob Mauer is here this morning. Welcome. And former manager and Commissioner Webb Fuller. I thought I saw Webb in here a little bit.
He's hiding.
So, I hope I didn't miss anyone. Welcome to all of you. This meeting, this regular meeting of the Nagshead Board of Commissioners for February 5th, 2025 is hereby called to order. I would ask you to please join me in a few moments of silence. There's a lot of things we can think about today. Now if you'll stand as you're able and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda and a couple of changes are going to be in order.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda with the change of moving the proclamation and the presentation of life savings awards in front of the retirements.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Oh, and favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, thank you very much. That brings us to recognitions and I will ask Amy to come to the podium.
Jackie. Jackie. We definitely have a packed house and so I think this is a great opportunity again just to remind our taxpayers and the board and our citizens that how much we value having our own tax collector as a town or the only municipality that does collect our own taxes. It provides so much value. It's smarter from a financial standpoint and it allows us to maintain control of our high collection rates. So with that being said, we'd like to welcome Jackie Samansky as our new tax collector. She's been sworn in as of Friday. And she's definitely been getting what she came here for, which is a challenge in growth, learning something new every day and definitely being busy. And thankfully, we have had enough time to do some succession planning as she trained under Linda Bitner. He's retiring here today for a month, which really does set us up for success. Jackie is a great fit both for our culture and town values personality-wise and definitely with her technical skills. Jackie came to us from Sun Realty where she was employed as an owner accountant working with receivables and revenue management. And she did lots of reconciling, which is obviously a paramount ability to have as our tax collector. Her work also involved assisting the public and maintaining discretion. So she is no stranger to providing the excellent customer service we expect and value. So Jackie is a dog mom outside of work and she loves spending time with her two yellow labs that keep her busy. And just a sidebar, we did give Jackie a fair warning that she had some big shoes to fill. She was definitely up for that challenge and we know she's going to shine and do great things for the town. So please help me give a warm welcome to Jackie.
The next item on our agenda is a recognition for five years of service and Perry will come up to the podium.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here before you today to recognize Master Police Officer Terrence Flogger for his five years of service with the town. Flogger joined our agency in 2019 after spending three years with Darien County Sheriff's Office. Flogger's worked his way through our career progression to Master Officer last year and is a member of our county joint emergency response team. He is always seeking training opportunities to further his growth in our profession and is always willing to help his fellow officers. Terry is married to his wife Catherine and has two children and enjoys spending his free time with his family hunting, fishing, and also training in mixed martial arts. Mr. Mayor, I do have a little bit extra to share with you today about Flogger. He is our celebrity with the police department. If y'all don't remember, but in May of 2020, Flogger, who had not been with us very long, made his appearance on Barstool Sports for running down a male on the beach that was causing a disturbance and tackling him into the ocean. They had the caption of "On Barstool Sports and the law won." That generated 2.3 million views on Barstool Sports and brought numerous comments about the town and Nagshead Police Department. So we are, we're proud of Flogger for getting us into the celebrity world and making Barstool Sports something that people could laugh about and also show that we don't mess around here in Nagshead. Flogger, congratulations on your five years. We look forward to many more.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Famous with my kids for that video.
Good work. Congratulations. That brings us to another five-year recognition and Amy will come back up.
Glad we have a packed house today because I love to showcase some of our employees that do a lot of the backend work that perhaps we take for granted. So we want to congratulate Brooke Norris. She's our deputy finance officer for her five years of service. And so actually I wrote this right after our meeting last month because the mayor had asked me more about the process after our audit and what that all involves. So I've really been reflecting on that more and it is great timing with Brooke's recognition. And you know, we are able to do great things and keep pace with larger organizations with a small staff because of our team members. And certainly Brooke is at the forefront of that. Last month, we had a five-minute clean audit presentation. And in essence, what does it take to do a year's worth of work culminating into five minutes of yes, everything's great? We work all year to reach this goal and it's the daily grind and consistent work that, and the discipline that puts us in this place. It's knowing ordinances, having knowledge of GASB, LGC, IRS, state statutes. It's a result of a work not by one person, but of course of our team. And Brooke is at the forefront of their team. She's responsible for the daily operations of the finance department, ensuring everyone stays on task, meets deadlines, stays in compliance, and helps carry out long-term goals and projects. At least once a year, I sit down with Brooke to outline our goals, work on the goals for our department for the year. And one year I said, hey, let's get the budget award. We had already done the PACFAR and got, you know, do the ACTFAR. And I think that same day she started researching other budgets and requirements. And of course, that year we got the budget award and now we have the triple crown for two or three years, hopefully three soon. But she's just a great partner to work on the financials and the PACFAR with and the budget. And actually, right now, the board might not know this, but she's working on getting a solar rebate from the IRS for the panels that we did at the public works projects. And that's going to be in the tune of about $150,000. So I really do want to thank and acknowledge Brooke for elevating the department to a high standard that we maintain and keep us all in check. You know, we have a great work atmosphere and that makes everyone want to do our best work. And without a great manager to foster and cultivate that environment, it would not be possible. So thank you, Brooke, for five years. We appreciate you and you will be here for many more years. Thank you.
All right, now with our rearranged agenda, that brings us to the proclamation for annual safety week. Shane will come up.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners and audience. Thank you for allowing me to speak briefly about our safety committee and about our safety program in the town. And thanks for your continued support of this program. Our safety committee meets regularly to work to find ways to keep our employees and our workplace safer. And I feel like it's a great benefit to all our staff and the town itself. I'd like to tell you a little bit about our safety week, if I could, that's coming up March 3rd through the 7th. We normally have this every year. We have numerous events that provide training and so forth for our employees. Some of these events are a defensive driving class, a CPR certification class, a first aid class for employees, audio metric testing for employees, and we wrap it up with a luncheon on Thursday. So again, we appreciate the continued support and we look forward to all employees and any commissioners that would like to attend at any of the expense to be there and participate. So once again, thank you very much, sir.
All right, thank you very much. We do have a proclamation for safety week. Whereas the town of Nagshead Board of Commissioners, employees, and citizens are committed to the maintenance of a safe and healthful workplace. And whereas the town has assumed an active role in the promotion of a safe and healthful work environment by a program of regular occupational worksite evaluations and employee safety education. And whereas the town strives to stimulate and maintain an interest in loss control and accident prevention and recognizes past and future services to the employees and citizens of Nagshead. And whereas the town seeks to guide and encourage the adoption and institution of safe work practices by all employers and employees in Nagshead. Now therefore, the Town of Nagshead Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim March 3 through 7, 2025 as safety week in the Town of Nagshead and commends this observance to our citizens. Furthermore, in recognition of this proclamation, I invite all Nagshead employees to attend the annual Nagshead Safety Luncheon on Thursday, March 26, 2025, from 12 noon to 2:00 p.m. at the Douglas A. Romali Fire Station Number 16, this being the fifth day of February 2025. Having heard the proclamation, a motion to adopt would be in order?
Some, yeah.
I have a motion and a second. Two motions and two seconds. All of those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Shane. Appreciate that. That brings us next to presentation of life-saving awards and Chief Perry Hale.
Good morning again, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. It's awards like this that make you proud to lead agencies and have staff that know that they're going to give their best all the time. And we have two of them here for you today. I'm here to recognize two of our officers for the department's life-saving award. Our staff was dispatched to an unknown problem on US 158 near West Sea Chase with a male not conscious and not breathing. The male was driving and went into cardiac arrest and thankfully, his fiancee was able to pull the vehicle safely to the shoulder of the road and call 911. I'm extremely proud of our staff and how they handled this situation. When I reviewed the body worn camera footage, I was proud to see the dedication and the commitment these two officers showed in efforts to provide care during a cardiac arrest. We come to work each day not knowing what calls may come, but we do our best to make sure that we're prepared. I certainly witnessed this in this situation between the police department, our fire department, and Dare County EMS. Seeing our departments work together with the passion and the desire to save Mr. Unfort's life is what sets Nagshead's employees apart. I'm very honored to have Mr. Unfort and his fiancee, Ms. Jarnigan, in the audience with us today. And I have Officer First Class Hashigami and Master Officer Flogger for a presentation of a citation, if I may read this. The citation sets forth in the action of the following citation. On December 23rd, 2024, Officer First Class Kana Hashigami responded to US 158 near West Sea Chase Drive for a medical call involving a 63-year-old male unconscious and not breathing due to a cardiac arrest while driving. Upon arrival, Officer First Class Hashigami evaluated the patient and with the assistance of Master Officer Flogger, removed the male from the driver's seat and immediately began chest compressions. These lifesaving efforts continued until Master Officer Flogger provided assistance with the AED to which his shock was advised. Officer Hashigami continued with aid until relieved by the Nagshead Fire Rescue and Dare County EMS. Officer First Class Hashigami's actions have not gone unnoticed and are in keeping with the highest standards of the Nagshead Police Department, given this fifth day of February 2025. Congratulations. For Master Officer Terrence Flogger, for actions set forth in the following citation. On December 23rd, 2024, Master Officer Terrence Flogger responded to US 158 near West Sea Chase Drive for a medical call involving a 63-year-old male unconscious and not breathing due to a cardiac arrest while driving. Upon arrival, Master Officer Flogger assisted Officer First Class Hashigami with removal of the male to start chest compressions. Master Officer Flogger obtained his AED, excuse me, while compressions were ongoing and with the quick setup garnered an immediate response for a shock deployment. These lifesaving efforts continued until relieved by Nagshead Fire Rescue and Dare County EMS. Master Officer Flogger's actions have not gone unnoticed and are in keeping with the highest standards of the Nagshead Police Department, given this fifth day of February 2025. We also have the fire chief that's going to present.
Yes, Chief.
Good morning, Mayor Cahoon and Commissioners and community members. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. I'd like to take a moment to recognize another group of first responders who played a crucial role in the lifesaving efforts you just heard about from Chief Hale. While the dedication of our law enforcement partners was instrumental in initiating care, the successful outcome of this emergency was also made possible by the quick actions and expertise of Nagshead Fire Rescue personnel. On December 23rd, 2025, Captain Mosman, Lieutenant Poole, firefighter Ramirez, and firefighter Rupke responded alongside law enforcement officers to an emergency involving Mr. Unflit. Upon arrival, our firefighters immediately assessed the situation, worked seamlessly in coordinating the efforts with the officers on scene. Their advanced medical training, rapid response, and teamwork ensured that crucial lifesaving interventions were performed. Because of their actions, Mr. Unflit was stabilized and transported for further care, preventing what could have been a tragic outcome. Their professionalism and dedication exemplify the very best of Nagshead Fire Rescue. Today, I'm honored to recognize Captain Mosman, Lieutenant Poole, firefighter Rupke, firefighter Ramirez for their outstanding service, their actions on this day and every day, demonstrating the courage, commitment, and compassion that defines our department. On behalf of Nagshead Fire Rescue, I wish to express my deepest appreciation for your time and consideration. Thank you for recognizing not only the efforts of our firefighters, but also the invaluable partnership between the public safety agencies. It is through teamwork that we continue to keep our community safe. I'd like to start with Captain Mosman. This lifesaving award is presented to Captain James Mosman in recognition of his courageous and selfless actions on December 23rd, 2024. Captain Mosman responded to a cardiac arrest emergency where he worked alongside his dedicated team to provide CPR and immediate lifesaving care. His swift actions played a critical role in the successful resuscitation of the victim who regained a pulse and made a full recovery. With gratitude and honor, we recommend Captain Mosman for embodying his highest standards of professionalism and heroism. Thank you, Captain. This lifesaving award is presented to Lieutenant Hayden Poole in his recognition for his courageous and selfless actions. On December 23rd, 2024, Lieutenant Poole responded to a cardiac arrest emergency where he worked alongside his dedicated team, provided CPR and immediate lifesaving care. His swift actions played a critical role in the successful resuscitation of this victim who regained pulse and made a full recovery. With gratitude and honor, we commend Lieutenant Poole for his actions. Lieutenant? This lifesaving award is presented to firefighter Will Rupke in recognition for his courageous and selfless actions. On December 23rd, 2024, firefighter Rupke responded to a cardiac arrest emergency where he worked alongside his dedicated team to provide CPR and immediate lifesaving care. His swift actions played a critical role in the successful resuscitation of the victim who regained a pulse and made a full recovery. With gratitude and honor, we commend firefighter Rupke for embodying the highest standards of professionalism and heroism. Last but not least, Jose Ramirez, new father. Looking at sleep. This lifesaving award is presented to Jose Ramirez in his recognition for his courage and selfless actions on December 23rd, 2024. Firefighter Ramirez responded to a cardiac arrest emergency where he worked alongside his dedicated team to provide CPR and immediate lifesaving care. His swift actions played a critical role in the successful resuscitation of the victim who regained a pulse and made a full recovery. who regained a pulse and made a full recovery. With gratitude and honor, we commend firefighter Ramirez for embodying embodying the highest standards of professionalism and heroism of Naggshead Fire Rescue.
Just very briefly, have no speech, and I'm still fighting a little bit my throat, but y'all don't know, these these heroes turn into my angels. And there's no gratitude in the world that could ever say how much I appreciate it. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to invite all of those who were recognized and the board to come around for a photograph, and then I would like to also invite Mr. Unflit if he would be interested to join us. Chief Hale was right. This is the kind of day that makes you proud, makes you, it's a it's a joyful occasion for the town to to honor our first responders who go out and, you know, frankly work miracles every day, and we very much appreciate them. That brings us to another recognition and a retirement. Oh, um, excuse me. Sorry about that. Chief, my apologies.
So this award was so rare, we had to make a new medal for it. So, we had, we had to go order new medals. Just twenty-nine days after their first lifesaving effort, these firefighters once again distrib- demonstrated their commitment to protecting our community. On January twentieth, two thousand twenty-five, Captain Mosman, Lieutenant Pooleen, firefighter Ramirez responded to a skilled nursing facility for a resident cardiac arrest. Upon arrival, they quickly assessed the situation, provided emergency medical care, worked efficiently to stabilize the patient. Their training, teamwork, and professionalism led to another successful outcome. It's not often that first responders are called upon to save a life twice in such a short period, but their actions on both occasions highlight the skill and dedication they bring to the job every day. For their continued service, courage, commitment, and compassion, I'm honored to recognize Captain Mosman, Lieutenant Pooleen, firefighter Ramirez today, their efforts to serve as a as a reminder of our essential role as firefighters for the well-being of our town. And they have already read their certifications, so. I'm gonna start first with Captain Mosman. Captain James Mosman is honored with a lifesaving award in recognition for his selfless heroism and dedication to duty in a critical situation on January twentieth, two thousand twenty-five, when he responded to a cardiac arrest emergency at an assisted living facility, and worked seamlessly with his team to provide CPR and immediate lifesaving care, demonstrating extraordinary professionalism in a high-pressure situation. Captain Mosman's actions that day stand as a testament to his skill, composure, and determination to protect and serve our community. Next is Lieutenant Hayden. Lieutenant Hayden Pooleen is being honored with lifesaving award in recognition for his selfless heroism and dedication to duty in a critical situation on January twentieth, two thousand twenty-five. He responded to a cardiac arrest emergency at an assisted living facility and worked seamlessly with his team to provide CPR and immediate lifesaving care, demonstrating extraordinary professionalism in a high-pressure situation. Lieutenant Pooleen's actions that day stand as a testament to his skill, composure, and determination to protect our community. Firefighter Jose Ramirez is being honored with a lifesaving award in recognition for his seamless heroism and dedication to duty in a critical situation. On January twentieth, two thousand twenty-five, he responded to a cardiac arrest emergency at an assisted living facility and worked seamlessly with his team to provide CPR and immediate lifesaving care, demonstrating extraordinary professionalism in a high-pressure situation. Firefighter Ramirez's actions that day stand as a testament to his skill, composure, and determination to protect our community. Like I said, this was a, just one of those events where you're like, I can't believe it, and you guys did it in in two days and and or in twenty-nine days, and I'm so proud of them and so proud of their efforts, so, thank you.
As are, as are we, thank you. And I'll ask the board to come around. Yes, we heard a few minutes ago, to them it's duty, you know, to the recipient and the person who has served, it's a miracle, and we are very grateful for the work that our, all of our first responders do, and are happy to honor them. That does bring us to a couple of retirements, and we will begin with Amy and, I guess, maybe Andy? With Linda? Amy, okay.
Hello again, come on, Linda. Wow, Linda Bittner, thank you so much for over ten years of dedicated service, and it's just, you know, your retirement, we want to celebrate you, we are happy for you, but we're sad for us. And it, it's been an absolute privilege, you know, Linda was here before I was, so I walked in, when I walked into my role as the finance officer, just what a, what an awesome team member to have. And I think this is the one impactful thing I thought about, is that she left our department and town a better place than when she got here. Her work has been absolutely meticulous. She was in on the ground floor when I got here, we had two MSDs, now we have six, so she was definitely a part of that, and that's in addition to, of course, our regular taxes, our beach nourishment taxes, the cart rollback, and of course, she's done that while she's, you know, also responsible for the beach driving permits and the business license. So Linda, you have set a standard for excellence in our department that elevates the work, it really does elevate the work ethic of of our peers. And so, I think it really speaks volumes that the, so I asked our colleagues what, if they had anything they wanted to share about Linda, and so I really. I really do think it speaks volumes that honestly, the common thread of all these comments, what they had said really embody her commitment and professionalism in the role, but just as important, a good friend and a good teammate. So, here's some notes that. I have thoroughly enjoyed having Linda as my coworker and next-door neighbor. Linda has demonstrated great dedication to the town and exceptional service and professionalism to her customers and her team. Linda's enthusiasm and commitment to excellence has been evident in everything she does. Her positive attitude, friendliness, and compassion towards others created a supportive environment for her team. We will also miss her delicious baking and plant-watering skills. Yeah, we have, that's also something we have to decide who's gonna learn. But mostly, thank you, Linda, for being a great friend. Linda, you have set us high bar in your role as tax collector. Thank you for being a role model and a friend. And saying goodbye to a wonderful colleague like you is never easy, it's been an absolute pleasure working alongside you. So, okay, I would be remiss one last time if I didn't mention the standard and expectation Linda has set with her tax collection rates, I've gotta do it. This ensures equity for taxpayers, and honestly, her competition and motivation is herself, she wants to outdo herself every year. And that really internal drive is so rare, it's such a treasure. But one last time, because we want you to know, this is not TV for granted, so I'm gonna start from the first year, two thousand fifteen, these are her tax collection rates. Two thousand fifteen, ninety-nine point ninety-one. Two thousand sixteen, ninety-nine point ninety-nine. Two thousand seventeen, a hundred percent. Two thousand eighteen, ninety-nine point ninety-nine. Two thousand nineteen, ninety-nine point ninety-eight. Twenty-twenty, ninety-nine point eight-seven-four. Okay, it was COVID, this is COVID. She's mad at me for saying this, but. Twenty-twenty-one, ninety-nine point nine-five-three. Twenty-twenty-two, and twenty-twenty-three, and twenty-twenty-four, ninety-nine point ninety-nine. So, with this being said, it seems obvious why Linda was selected as the twenty-twenty-four Outstanding Tax Collector of the Year for the entire state of North Carolina. Yeah, and this is for. And this is for just, not municipalities, it's for the counties and the towns, there's one person they select a year, and that was Linda. So, I would go as far as to say that Linda has left a legacy and set an expectation here for high tax collection rates, including collecting real property tax for every known owner several years during her tenure. So, way to leave on a high note, Linda, definitely a tough act to follow, but Jackie's ready for that, both personally and professionally, so we will really miss you. Thank you for your dedication, work ethic, and all-around standard of excellence you have reached for and just exceeded every year, year in and year out. This is the first retirement I've had to do, and it's really emotional, we wish you all the best, we're gonna miss you, and please don't be a stranger.
Well, wait, wait, wait. Linda, Linda, would you wish to say anything this morning?
I, I really enjoyed working here for ten years, great staff, I mean, I love everybody here, and thank you for all the accolades.
You did it.
Who, who were your guests this morning?
I have some friends here, Kathy and Nancy, they're sitting back there, they came up from Florida and Asheville, and I also have neighbors of Carolyn, Sue, and Dave back there, so.
Wonderful, thank you. Ask the board to come around here one more time.
Not one more time, but another time.
So, we, we do have a couple of things for Linda.
Yeah. You were, you were ten-year. And we have a plaque this morning presented to Linda L. Bittner. Upon retirement, was grateful appreciation of your loyal and dedicated service for the Town of Naggshead, two thousand fourteen to two thousand twenty-five.
We, we hate to see employees go. We know they look forward to retirement, but we're, we're a bit of a big family here, and we, we do appreciate the work that everyone does, and those, the, the collection of taxes is, it's not a job I would want, it's not a job you would seem like a lot of people would want, but it is obviously critical, and she's obviously very, very, very good at it, good at it. That brings us to our next retirement, which is former town clerk Carolyn Morris, Andy.
All right. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Good morning, Carolyn. I missed you the other day. We had cupcakes, and I had to run an errand, I said, you're gonna be here when I get back, right? And I got back, and she was gone. This is Carolyn's favorite thing, public recognition. But we are collectively here as a town today to honor the retirement and the thirty years of dedicated service of town's longtime town clerk, Carolyn Morris. I'll begin by saying a few things. I know there's a lot of people here that came to see this after I say a few things, we're gonna open it up for anybody who'd like to come up and say farewell to Carolyn. And then, you know, if you wanna say some things. And then we're gonna turn it over to the board and the mayor, and I think they have a few other special presentations for Carolyn. You know, we already recognized Carolyn's friends and Jim here, so thank you for being here, and neighbors. I think this is certainly a testament to how everybody feels about Carolyn, she's got a lot, a lot of people that love her. Carolyn started with the town in nineteen ninety-six, she was hired by town manager Webb Fuller, who's also here. Ninety-five, oh, sorry. I read that somewhere, so. Anyway, she, she served as the town clerk in that capacity for her entire career here. I'm actually the sixth town manager she's worked with, started out with Webb, and then we went to Seth, Charlie, Cliff, Greg, and then me. So I'm just, just a number. When she was hired, the town, the town hall wasn't even constructed yet. Where did you start, you worked in the octagonal buildings?
The round buildings.
The round buildings, so she saw a major change shortly after she started with the construction of the town hall, I'm sure she helped organize that and put everything together in place the way she needed it. If you think about the difference in the town between nineteen ninety-six and now, Carolyn certainly helped see the town through many of its major accomplishments. She was here during a critical time during the town's history and development. It would certainly take some time to calculate how many board meetings that Carolyn was present for. Basic math says that she's probably over seven hundred meetings. That's just an estimate, but I'm gonna go with that. So think about how many agendas she put together, summaries of actions, minutes. summaries of actions, minutes, notices, postings. It's amazing. She was also involved in writing a lot of our codes and ordinances, updating planning documents, creating the town's budgets and capital improvement plans, keeping records and minutes, assisting with projects, including developing a locally funded beach nourishment program from scratch, and ensuring we follow state and local laws through every step of these processes, rarely with any missteps or mistakes. I said this the other day when we had a gathering over here. It's really easy to take Carolyn's duties for granted, the town clerk's duties, especially when you have Carolyn. A simple example of this, and this has happened, by the way, although thankfully not too often. Say you have a contentious issue coming up, perhaps that requires a public hearing. You expect a roomful of citizens. The board's very anxious and gearing up for what might not be such a pleasant day. Imagine finding not too soon before the meeting that the hearing was not advertised properly, and the item will have to be postponed. For staff, those aren't good days. It's very embarrassing to the board and doesn't help the public's confidence. Having someone like Carolyn has meant you never had to worry about these things and would get done on time and correctly. This example, this rarely happened in thirty years. Much like her friend Linda, Carolyn's good about ninety-nine point nine percent of the time. She always kept us on track, and we will be forever indebted to her for her service. She was here during so many extreme weather events and calamities, including Hurricane Isabel, Irene, Sandy, and Floyd, and also during the COVID pandemic. The pandemic created a huge burden on Carolyn. I sat in the office next to her that entire time, maintaining proclamations, organizing virtual meetings, adapting to an ever-changing landscape of requirements and processes. When others were working from home in isolation, Carolyn was here in the office every single day, making sure our citizens and our staff received what they needed, and we never missed a beat. Carolyn, I personally have enjoyed working with you for a total of fifteen years. I've known you for twenty-three years. You're always upbeat, you have a great sense of humor. I always know about the latest movies. You're willing to help out in any way you can and always put the town first. Thank you so much for your thirty years of service. You will be sorely missed. The only thing that gives me any hope moving forward is that you took the time to work with Brittany and to help her ease into this role, and that you're only a few miles up the road. So enjoy your retirement. Thank you so much.
Carolyn, would you wish to, to say a few words this morning?
Just thank you to those that hired me. And thank you, Webb Fuller, Connie Hardy, of course, Bob Muller, Renee, and Anne. I really appreciate it, and I've really enjoyed my time here. I've got great employees that I've worked with, and I really enjoyed it.
All right, thank you. Have a seat, why don't you take a seat up front? While we let folks come up and, and so, Andy? I'll extend the invitation to any members of, of the community who wish to stand up and say a few words, please.
Before I talk about Carolyn, I want to tell you a little history about tax collection rates in the town of Axhead. I came on the board in nineteen eighty-five. In nineteen eighty-five, the town's tax collection rate was around eighty-seven percent. We were not happy with that. It got driven up into the low nineties through nineteen ninety. Nineteen ninety-one, Mayor Kahoon came along, and it became an emphasis. And at ninety-six and ninety-seven percent, we were beating the county by enough money to maintain an individual tax collection rate. What has happened since then, and what Linda has done is nothing short of remarkable, absolutely remarkable. And if you had told the board in nineteen eighty-five, the town was going to have a hundred percent or ninety-nine point nine percent tax collection rate, they would have told you that was absolutely impossible because they knew eight different people who were not going to pay their taxes. Back then, taxes, the interest on taxes was better than the interest on loans. So it was cheaper not to pay your taxes and use that money in your business than it was to pay your taxes. So Linda, thank you so much on behalf of every taxpayer in town in Axhead for what you have, for what you have done, which is remarkable. Carolyn, I remember Carolyn, first few days, or meeting Carolyn, it was kind of a hot seat at the old town hall. It got turned over a few times, and you kind of wondered if the person who was there was going to stick. It was pretty clear that Carolyn was, was, was going to stick. She is, was an enormous help to me during my entire time, during my time on the board that overlapped with Carolyn, but even more so during my time as mayor, as a working mayor. Somebody who worked forty hours a week. My time, my work time overlapped Carolyn's work time. So I would call her from the drive-through line at Wendy's. And while ordering, check up on whatever specific set of projects needed to get checked up on. And she was always there. What was truly remarkable was that I would call to leave a message for her on Saturday or on Sunday afternoon, expecting to get her answering machine. But I didn't get her answering machine. She was in the office, and she was working. Talking with Anna Sadler. Carolyn works at these meetings, and when the board goes in there for closed sessions to talk about things that are private, may, may, secret, Carolyn goes in there too. And there has never, to my knowledge, been any hint of what happens in that room getting out. And the skeletons that Carolyn knows about, and where they bury them, are, trust me, many. And we appreciate her absolute, her absolute discretion. She was a remarkable assistant to me, not just when I was on the board. I spent some time as the chairman of the town of Axhead Fireman's Relief Fund, which is a board that's kind of tedious. There's a lot of stuff, a lot of hoops that have to get jumped through to provide the benefits that firefighters get, a fund that's funded from a tax on property insurance. And Carolyn was our primary staff person working with that and was always ready when we needed to write a check. She'd write checks for me, because as you know, we know my handwriting is abysmal. And it just, again, it's difficult to imagine the town of Axhead without Carolyn Morris sitting in, sitting back in that, in that office. Brittany, I know you'll do an outstanding job, but you've got huge shoes to fill. And Carolyn, thank you for everything you've done for me, and more importantly, everything you have done for the town and all its citizens and property owners. Thank you.
It's a race.
Bob, you're kind of a hard act to follow. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Good morning, Carolyn, and thank you. There's a lot of people in the community I know that wish they would be here to say thank you, but over the years of, that I've worked with Carolyn, and I was here when she was hired as well. I kind of left before you did, though, but. She has done an outstanding job, as evidenced by the number of recognitions we've had this morning. We have outstanding employees. Linda as well, thank you very much. But Carolyn is an exemplary employee. She did work weekends, nights. There was never a time that something wasn't already done before you thought it was even be ready. The smile on her face, her dedication to the town, the, the way she got along so well with others, and the many board members that she had to weave around, because we've had quite a few. And the one constant has been Carolyn throughout all the thirty years. I can't say enough to say thank you. I know there's, half a lot of citizens, I say thank you as well. You're going to be missed, Brittany, no offense. We know you're going to do a great job. You've got big shoes to fill. And I know Carolyn has trained you well for your role as you move forward, as well as she trained a lot of other people moving in. Michelle, that came along to the town. We've had deputy clerks. Michelle lasted for quite a while as well. But Carolyn, I hope you enjoy your retirement. I know the town would love to have you back on many occasions. And we do hope you have a great time in your, yours. Jim, I don't know what you're going to do with her at home all the time. Really, that's kind of a, it's kind of a new role for both of you. And I can only say thank you again, and bon voyage.
Mayor, Board, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Carolyn, just job well done, honestly. Thank you from the bottom of my heart and from the town. I'm not going to have anything funny to say, but I do want to say something that I think is extremely important that's very overlooked. In the old days, we had the Institute of Government, and we had town clerks. And town clerks at that time were the keepers of the record. Today, we have the School of Government, and guess what the clerks are? The keepers of the record. In the old days, the keepers of the record meant that the clerk hoarded everything. If you wanted any information, anything, you had to go to the clerk's office and have the clerk give you that information. When Carolyn came on board, I think the vision was the best thing we can do in terms of being keeper of the records is to make everything as transparent as possible. Give every bit of information that we have in the town to the public so the public can see everything that's going on. Carolyn was the person that made that happen. I mean, you don't realize in terms of operations what that means. That's a transitional change in government function. And in that, one person that's in control of all the information goes from hoarding it to disseminating it to everybody. Carolyn's the person that made that happen, and the town should deeply recognize her for making that happen. Thank you, Carolyn, appreciate it.
Seeing no other members of the public, I'll invite the, the board to also speak this morning. But one of my observations about Carolyn is, is with what excellence and grace she's always done this job. And her institutional knowledge has been a profound asset to us. And we will, we will miss that. And, you know, when COVID came, and I was a first-term mayor, and the emergency group was meeting every day for months. I mean, virtually and in person, it went on and on and on. And we had declared emergency, and it got tweaked and changed, and I would have to, I had to rely on Carolyn. I didn't know how to sort of keep all of that in order. And Carolyn was the person who really kept us between the, between the rails. I could not have stayed within the ordinances and the law without her help. And so she helped make me a, a better mayor through that, through that process. Carolyn is the very embodiment of the town's stated mission. Supporting and serving our citizens and visitors, municipal services delivered in an open, respectful, and responsive manner. And she's been here long enough, she may have inspired that vision. She may not be the embodiment, she, she may be the person who inspired that vision statement. And so we are very grateful to you. And I will ask board members if anyone else wishes to speak.
Wow, thirty years and six different bosses? That's impressive. It shows your ability to get along with people. And, I mean, as an employer and owner of a small business, I know what it's like to have somebody like you. And it just makes your job so much easier every day to know that, you know, you always can count on you, and you're always going to be there for everyone. And I guess you can see how much everybody appreciates you. But I just want to thank you for all that you've done for the town. Appreciate it.
Thank, thank you. You know, we first met outside of the town, and I've grown to appreciate you even more. Not going to say I, I see exactly what Jim sees in you. But I don't know what you see sometimes in Mr. Morris either, because you don't go to Antagata as much as you, you know, as he would like you to. But I know moving forward, you're going to spend those months in Antagata that Jim has warned you to do. But no, thank you for always being there for us. Thank you.
Carolyn, I would like to thank you also for all of your service. It's clear by listening to the stories and looking at everyone here that you have had a positive impact and everyone that you've crossed paths with. On Friday, when I was watching you swear in, Brittany, it occurred to me how many people you have probably sworn in as they have started their time with the town of Axhead or their service with the town of Axhead. You've sworn myself on the planning board, as well as a commissioner. And when I look around this room, there's so many that you've sworn in, that their stories have started with you swearing them in. So again, I just want to thank you for your service, and thank you for starting so many stories in the town of Axhead. I hope that you enjoy your retirement. It is well-earned and most deserved. Thank you.
John, I'll extend this to you as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that, because I wanted to show my appreciation to Ms. Morris. She's been an outstanding municipal clerk. As Mr. Fuller said, it is a very important job for a town to have a clerk who does a good job. And Carolyn has always done an outstanding job. She's been a pleasure to work with. I'm really going to miss working with you. But I hope you enjoy your retirement.
And we have, I'll ask the board to come up, ask Carolyn to join us. We have several things for you this morning.
I will begin with a resolution from the Association of Municipal Clerks, a retirement resolution. Whereas we are aware, the clerk is the historian of the municipality, the clerk is also the heart of the community. And whereas we are all aware of the many demands made upon a municipal clerk and the many hats one wears, we are also aware that the rewards in our profession are few and far between, but the quality and quantity of our work are nevertheless. And whereas a municipal clerk is truly a dedicated and loyal professional, outstanding in every way, the day-to-day challenges are many, but each challenge is mapped with the same zeal and determination as the dawn of a new day. And whereas so much is given of ourselves through the years serving our municipality, but little thought is given to the time swiftly passing by, to the years which have gone. Time has passed so quickly, days into weeks, weeks into months, months into years. And whereas there comes a time, and all too soon, it is time to end a chapter. After all, our careers in local government are but a chapter in the book of life. It is time to move on to other things, the next chapter in our life. And whereas it is the desire of the North Carolina Association of Municipal Clerks to recognize those clerks who have completed the chapter known as clerk. Now therefore be it resolved by the officers of board and directors, and on behalf of the North Carolina Association of Municipal Clerks, that Carolyn Morris be recognized for the unselfish giving of many years of service to her municipality through her gracious giving of her time in town in carrying out the many duties and responsibilities associated with her position as town clerk for the town of Axhead, North Carolina. And further, we extend our sincerest best wishes to Carolyn Morris as she undertakes this new chapter in her book of life, a chapter that includes doing whatever she pleases, whenever she pleases, a chapter entitled Retirement. Witnessed by hand and seal, the sixth day of gang weary Sabrina Reinhardt, President of the North Carolina Association of Municipal Clerks. You can put this one, you can hide this one in your pocket. That's, that's a small gift of appreciation.
Thank you, very much.
We also have for you a plaque presented on the occasion of your retirement. Presented to Carolyn F. Morris upon retirement with grateful appreciation of your loyal and dedicated service to town in Axhead in nineteen ninety-five to two thousand twenty-five. This is a proposing special confidence in the integrity, learning, and zeal of Carolyn This is a proposing special confidence in the integrity, learning, and zeal of Carolyn Morris. I do by these presents confer the order of the Longleaf Pine with the rank of Ambassador Extraordinaire, privileged to enjoy fully all the rights granted to members of this exalted order, among which is the special privilege to propose the following North Carolina toast in select company anywhere in the free world. Here's to the land of the Longleaf Pine, the summer land where the sun does shine, where the wheat grows strong and the strong go great. Here's to damn home, the old North State, signed by Josh Stein.
I wonder how many boards have gotten to give as many Longleaf Pine presentations as this has been. Yeah, yeah.
That's a lot in the town.
Pretty amazing. I will suggest that we have public comment and their consent agenda before we break. And then we break immediately before the presentation. True. Let's, um, let's go with the public comment, John.
Yes, sir. At this time, the...
Oh, whoa, whoa, whoa. No, never mind. I'm sorry. I am jumping. You're trying, you're trying to keep me straight, and I am totally ignoring you. We will go to the presentation for the Dare County Housing Task Force then. See. No, 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 no. It's my fault. It's my fault. I am just like all over the map this morning.
I was not paying attention.
There's too much scratch on my agenda here this morning. I'm lost.
I understand. What terrific people to follow. Carolyn was always very helpful to me. And I, I know how wonderful that feeling is to be able to retire after thirty years of service. It's very empowering. So good luck to her on that. Good morning. My name is Donna Creef, and I serve as the Government Affairs Director for the Outer Banks Association of Realtors. But I'm also the Chair of the Dare Community Housing Task Force, and I'm here this morning in that role. I have with me my Vice Chair this morning of the Task Force. Mr. Garrity is also on the Task Force, as well as Town Manager Andy Gorman and Mayor Pro Tem Mike Sears. So thank you for having us here this morning to talk about our 2024 report. Mayor Pro Tem Sears is the one that forced me into doing this report. Yeah, I was in here one day working at one of your meetings, sitting in the second row there, and he said, well, Donna's doing a report, and she's going to have it ready in December. And I was like, oh, okay, well, let me go home and get ready on that. So the Task Force had met over the course of 2024, and the report summarizes our work. So let me see if I can get the electronics to work for me today. Maybe not. What am I supposed to be doing here, Brittany? Oh, there we go. Okay, so the Task Force was adopted by the, the, the report was adopted by the Task Force on December the sixteenth by unanimous vote. It summarizes our work, our research, and our presentations that we heard over the course of 2024. It presents statistical information to demonstrate market conditions and the housing needs of the county, and it makes conclusions and sets our task and priority for the coming year of 2025. I have the webpage address there of where the report is available. If you haven't had a chance to read it, it's like sixty-six pages long. It's a pretty quick read. Okay, so obviously, I'm just struggling today, and I apologize with this, guys. Okay, there we go. So the one thing I do want to talk about before we delve into the report is, is we've been selected to participate in the UNC School of Government program called Our State, Our Homes. This is an eighteen-month program that will be focusing on housing throughout the state of North Carolina and how local governments and other organizations can address those housing needs. From the press release, it said the aim is to connect communities with the resources and tools needed to assess and make decisions on how to respond to local housing needs. Dare County is one of fourteen teams that was selected. I think there was probably eighty-seven organizations that submitted applications. We quite honestly didn't really think that we had a chance, but, you know, we submitted our application. You guys did a letter of support for us, and so we think that that was probably one of the keys to us getting selected was the large number of letters of support that we had. Our first in-person meeting is later this month. We have to select a core team. That is myself, Mr. Fearing, Andy is serving on that, as well as Matt Neal and Mr. Anthony Fletcher. We hope to use our twenty-four report as our action plan for this program. The important thing about the Our State, Our Homes program is that the travel expenses will be covered by the UNC School of Government, and we are also getting ten thousand dollars from them to do a pilot program implementation. I'm not sure what that project will be, but we'll be working on that. So there are no costs to Dare County or any of the other towns that participate in that. Here we go. Let's see. So what influences housing? North Carolina Constitution and the general statutes sets restrictions on how local governments can spend public funds on housing. There's also enabling legislation in North Carolina. If local governments don't have the authority to do certain things, they have to get that permission from the North Carolina General Assembly. And then we're also influenced by our geography. We're influenced by the presence of public lands. We have almost eighty percent of our land in Dare County is owned by a local, by a local government, federal government, the state, or a nonprofit agency. The land use regulations have a lot to do with the influence of what occurs with housing, development cost, and community attitudes. So the report breaks down housing into four components: available housing, attainable housing, sustainable housing, and acceptable housing. We have to have a housing inventory. There needs to be land. It needs to be set aside for long-term occupancy, and it needs to be set aside in perpetuity. The housing needs to be attainable, meaning that our residents shouldn't have to spend more than thirty percent of their household incomes for housing. And that usually includes your mortgage payment, your insurance, and your taxes, or your rent. Thirty percent is the standard metric that's used for that. Housing needs to be sustainable. It needs to be able to meet the natural hazards that we have to address here in Dare County. And then even for those folks here in Dare County that have a house and have lived in their house for some time, they need to be able to sustain the ability to stay in that house with the rising cost of repairs and the rising cost of insurance. And then we also need to have acceptable housing that's consistent with zoning and the aesthetics and the scale of our neighborhoods. Here are some of the statistics from the report. You'll see that the median home sales price in twenty, twenty twenty, twenty-three, I'm sorry, twenty oh-three was three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. In twenty twenty, that jumped up to three hundred and eighty-one five. So that's a seventeen percent increase in that, that time period. But there was a big jump from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four. You'll see that there was a sixty-three percent increase, and that median income is six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. And those are, the numbers are coming from reports that, from the Outer Banks Association of Realtors. The median household income for all of Dare County is just shy of eighty thousand dollars, and that's a number from the American Community Survey, which is associated with the U.S. Census Bureau. That thirty percent metric that I talked about, that thirty percent housing equates to just shy of twenty-four thousand dollars. And then the other statistic there is that thirty-one percent of households in Dare County are considered cost burden, and that's for those who own their house, as well as those who rent their house. This is just a chart that shows the tenure of occupancy of our houses. We have a lot of houses in Dare County. We have almost thirty-five thousand houses in Dare County, and fifty-three percent of those are considered as vacant, that meaning that they're not occupied on a permanent basis. That includes our vacation rentals. You'll see there for the Town of Naxhead, their numbers are sixty-nine, those numbers equate to sixty-nine percent as a vacant. That's the blue bar there in the middle, and then the yellow bar is the one that's the occupied. Oops, going the wrong way. Okay, I'm just not making it this morning, guys. I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Technology is not my thing. Yeah. So housing and tenure, one of the things that we often hear as the Task Force members is, is, you know, the short-term rentals and how that's impacted the long-term housing situation in Dare County. There's no doubt that it has impacted that. The popularity of online marketing platforms such as Airbnb and VRBO have resulted in there being a transition to, from long-term rental to short-term rentals. What we found, and actually in one of the workshops that the town had on the ADUs, there were a lot of people in the audience that night who indicated that they have ADUs and that they use that to supplement their income and pay for their own mortgage. Local governments don't have the authority to offer tax adjustments to property owners for them to choose to do long-term rentals versus short-term rentals. And then case law also impacts how local governments regulate short-term rentals. In our conversations with property managers, we have seen that based on what they're seeing is that some of those short-term rentals are transitioning back to long-term rentals due to the decreased demand. Unless your short-term rental is on the waterfront, or you have some unique perspective or some unique aspect of your, of your house, that demand is decreasing. And so we're, we're seeing that transition back, and we think that trend's going to continue. This just breaks down the median home sales price from twenty twenty fifteen, and it just shows that big jump in the, in the years of twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. You'll see that, you know, it's, it's, it's a modest increases most of the time, and then in twenty twenty-one, it jumps up to twenty-one percent, jumps up to twenty-three percent, and now it's, it's gone back down to five and three percent. So that's just showing that those years of the, of the big increases and how we've gotten to where we are today. This slide breaks down those median sales prices by geography. You'll see that Duck has the highest one. Naxhead is right there somewhere in the middle with Collington as the lowest. I just wanted to break down that six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars and make that more relatable to the towns here. And I've been doing these, we went and Andy had to sit through the presentation at the county the other day, and Andy, I apologize for you having to hear this again. And so, and we, and we went to Kitty Hawk Monday night, and so we're making the rounds. And I've been trying to make the, the presentation specific to the local government that I was speaking to. And you'll see that I have in my doing so, I have a, I have an error down there at the bottom number there. That's supposed to be that number where the red mark is. It's supposed to be two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. So I've taken that median sales price there of six hundred and sixty-one and related to what that, that monthly payment would be, what the annual payment would be. And to qualify for a house at that price, you would need an annual salary of two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. So that, that's a, that's a big, big median income household, or a big required household income. The actual median adjusted household income is there for, for Naxhead is ninety-four thousand dollars. And that's, that twenty-two number that I referenced before has been adjusted by four percent annually. I adjusted that by four percent. And so based on that ninety-four thousand dollar median household income, your house that you could qualify for, or the mortgage that you could qualify for is two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. So there's a big gap in between what that actual median household income gets you and what the median sales price is here in twenty twenty-four. I also went through, oh, let's go back real quick. I'm sorry. The, I just, if you would go back, there you go. I ran some recent MLS listings just to see what was available here in Naxhead on the west side where most, most year-round residents live. And you'll see that the cheapest one is four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. So just, just giving you some examples of what's occurring, and those were numbers that I pulled last week, actually. So I also wanted to hit on some of the monthly rents, and so I pulled some monthly rentals that I found on, on some local webpages and some of the property manager sites. You'll see that there's a variety of housing types there. There's a mobile home. There's apartments. Over a business, there's single-family homes. The one there in Naxhead is coming in at twenty-eight hundred dollars. The cheapest is fourteen hundred dollars. So there's, there's an average of in between fourteen hundred dollars, and I think the one in Southern Shores is thirty-two hundred dollars. So that's a fair amount of money that you're paying for your monthly rents. I did pull some salary information. I think it's important that we talk about the salaries and make that relatable when we have these conversations. Some of these are coming from the town's webpage. You'll see we have a first-year teacher there, a police officer. We have some jobs from the private sector, from the hospital. I just think it's important that we make those salary levels relatable, so folks know who it is that we're talking about. And, and, you know, we're, as trying to address this housing situation. Down at the bottom, there is the average weekly wage that I pulled from the Chambers webpage of eight hundred and forty-five dollars, and that's from the second quarter of twenty twenty-four. So that's kind of outdated, but that was the most recent information that they had on there. But I dare say that it hasn't increased that much. Some of the housing options that the report discusses, accessory dwelling units. The town is in the process of having those discussions. The planning board is going through that now. We see that the, in terms of the acceptability of housing, that duplexes and small-scale multifamily works better instead of large complexes. The town just recently adopted their multifamily ordinance, and that's mentioned in the report. The other thing, and I think this is on the town's radar as well, is looking at having some sort of, expanding your ordinances to have workforce housing on commercial sites. I know the county and the Town of Kitty Hawk both have commercial accessory structure ordinances. But the other important thing that comes through in all of our research is that in order to make sure that, that whatever housing is provided is dedicated to year-round occupancy, that you have to have some sort of deed restrictions. And that was a huge part of what the town did with their workforce, with their multifamily regulations in terms of that tenure requirement, as well as that workforce requirement. And so that's a very important tool that is used throughout the nation. And it's used here in Dare County, with some of the other local governments have deed restrictions on the tenure of their ADU requirements. And so I think that as we move forward, that's going to continue to be an important tool that we need to focus on. Some of the other tasks that the Task Force is going to be focusing on this year in twenty twenty-five is further research into additional housing for teachers and local governments. Under two thousand and four legislation that was approved by the North Carolina General Assembly for the Board of Education. Back on one of my previous slides, I talk about that enabling legislation that local governments have to, have to have to do certain things. And this is one of the enabling legislations that has been adopted for local governments. I think there's one other local government in North Carolina, Transylvania County, that has something similar about provide, about housing for their employees. We're also going to investigate the establishment of a nonprofit agency within a perpetual funding source. We're going to investigate the development of housing on government-owned land. And then we'll be undertaking outreach activities to make the AMI and the housing needs relatable to residents and property owners. I have secured, or Obar has secured, a three thousand dollar grant from the National Association of Realtors to assist with that. And then we're also hoping that our participation in the Our State, Our Home program will be beneficial in helping with these other three tasks. Just expanding a little bit on that, on the oh-four legislation, that's been very successful with the construction of housing for teachers. The legislation actually addresses teacher and local government employees, and it complates three sites. We have one in Kill Devil Hills already. We have some in Buxton. The legislation references a site on Roanoke Island and the mainland, and so we're going to hope to work with the Board of Education and their nonprofit to maybe get some, something going on on Roanoke Island and the mainland. And then there's plans to do additional sites there in Kill Devil Hills that they've been progressing on. And so that... And so, that is, it's something that's already in place, if you will. And we think that because of that legislation, that this has an opportunity to be successful again since it's been successful in the past. And then, some outreach activities. We are working with the East Carolina professors on their studying workforce housing and the community attitudes toward workforce housing. They are planning a series of community meetings. We have some, we have one scheduled here at the town hall in Nags Head later this month, or I think it's in March, maybe. We're going around to all of the local governments as part of the outreach and presenting this report on the final, or on the report that the task force adopted. I'm sure that there'll be some outreach ideas that come out of the Our State, Our Homes program. And then, we have a subcommittee that meets on our outreach and engagement. And I would imagine that they'll be identifying some other efforts as we move forward. And so, it's kinda work in progress. We were talking with Bob Mueller before the meeting, and he was saying, "Well, you know, the report didn't mention this, it didn't mention that." And I was like, "Well, there's just so much information." That I tried to keep it so that it wasn't overwhelming. I didn't want it to be a 200-page report that nobody would look at. At least, maybe with sixty-five pages, somebody's reading it. And so, it's a very complex issue that we've all realized over the course of the past years. And I think if it had been as easy as what everybody seems to think it is, that it wouldn't still continue to be a problem. And so, I'm gonna stop right there and let my colleague, Mr. Fearing, speak to you. And then, if we have any questions, we'll take them. But again, thank you so much for your time this morning, and good luck.
Thank you.
I don't know if you heard what she said. I won't have problems with the technology. And that's true, 'cause when we went from pinball to Pac-Man, I got lost in the electronic age. My name's Malcolm Fearing. I'm from Roanoke Island, most specifically Manio. And as Bob would say, the western suburb of Nags Head. And I accept that. It's good to see so many people in the room today dealing with this subject matter of housing. A little bit of history, and I didn't know this, and I'm sure you all do, but I'm gonna read it anyway. A Nags Head summer tradition begins. In the center of it all is a village called Nags Head, established in the 1830s. North Carolina's first tourist colony. Now, that's what I didn't know. North Carolina's first. Soon it became a summertime destination for living within a boat ride across the Roanoke Sound, which I'm assuming that was from Manio. Bankers, they were called, had been living in the area since the 18th century. Likely herdsman, fishermen, ship-based builders, and scavengers. Because when ships would wash up on the beach, they helped themselves to the bounty. In 1885, thirteen single cottages, many made of scavenged wood, sprung up within 300 feet of the breakers. Through pockets of cottages and mom-and-pop hotels, sprang up along NC-12. There was little development around Nags Head until the 1960s. It was in '61 or so when the town was incorporated. And my father was in the General Assembly when that was done. In 1970, real estate developers from Ocean City, Maryland, began spreading the word about pristine outer banks as a place to get away from it all. All things have changed. A little history about where we are in the issue of housing. It's not new. In 1985, there was a Boone's Allen Hamilton study done by the county. It, an excerpt from there. "It appears that Dare County has a growing problem with insufficient housing supply for low and moderate-income people living or working in the county." It further states, "Without some corrective action, and the increasing gap between job demand and available housing is likely to become an impediment to future economic expansion." Both Ms. Creve and I started this journey somewhere around 1989. Donna was 22. She was the assistant planner for the county. I was 34. I'm gonna turn 70 this month, Renee. There's also people in this group, in this group gathered today that have been in this issue a long time. Duke has been in this issue a long time. Bobby Outen has been in it. Bob Mueller, Renee, Anna. We have been in this issue a long time talking about it. So, it's not new. The Chamber of Commerce has been in this issue over the years. The county had a subcommittee some years ago. I think Richard Johnson was the chair of that, somewhere around 2005. A report from the county records in '87, I'm gonna read. "Dare County, like other resort-ordinated communities, has a shortage of low- and moderate-income housing. The need for such housing was identified most strongly at the general public input meeting on Hatters Island and was affirmed by several members of the Dare County Planning Board. The problem stems in part from the competition for housing between permanent residents and the seasonal residents. Seasonal residents and second homeowners often have a higher level of income available to spend on housing. At the same time, the tourist-driven service economy of the county provides the highest number of jobs in the lower pay scales. There needs, there is a need to meet the housing needs of these lower-to-moderate and permanent residents." Population, also in Boone Allen Hamilton's study in 1985, excuse me. There are approximately 17,000 people that lived in the entire county. Today, there's somewhere around 38,000. That's a 21,000 increase. In Nags Head, there's a approximate population of 3,233 people that live in Nags Head. In 2000, there was a population of approximately 2,707 people, an increase of 527 residents. When Ms. Creve made her presentation and talked about cost burden, and these, this is a general statement dealing with the entire county, so it might be slightly different in Nags Head. But 31% of the residents in Dare County are cost burden. Well, in the municipalities, combined municipalities, there's 6,000, that's 6,020 people approximately. In the unincorporated areas of the county, that's about 5,031, for a total of little less than 12,000 residents or cost burden based on the criteria that Ms. Creve talked about, paying the mortgage, paying insurance, stuff like that. But I wanna take it a little bit further. In a assessment that was done by the Currituck Dare Community Foundation, it stated in 2004, 52% of the tenants or cannot, or cannot afford to pay the rent. Fifty-two percent. In the Nags Head economy, the per capita income is a little bit higher than the rest of the county. The, as a general statement, it is around 52,000 for a high, 37.5 for a low. For today's discussion, I'm gonna use the $50,000 figure, which is kinda equal to the Chambers number of 800 and some dollars a month, I mean, a week in income. That equals somewhere in the $3,200, $3,300 a month paid. Rent, I might use rent and homeownership as the approximate same number of $2,000 for this illustration. That leaves approximately $1,300 a month to pay what? What it'll, what basic food costs. Mr. Sanders, you know about food costs? They're not going down. Eggs, I think. Waffle House charging 50 cent a piece now, if you get one, I hear, today. Auto expenses, whether it's a payment, insurance, gas. Health insurance. For an individual, it could be 800, $1,200 a month for just health insurance, if you could have it. Cable and internet. My first house payment was 170-some dollars a month. My wife tells me our cable and internet bill is more than that today. I'm sorry, Annie, I'm gonna use this same illustration about my granddaughter who plays with Renee's people in the neighborhood, in the hood. That's Valerie. That's Valerie. She's in first grade. Hope she takes after her grandmother in education, 'cause Renee knows how poor of a student I was. And I wish you would've encouraged me more, Renee. The combined local, state, federal funding for education of that group of students is a little shy of $75 million a year. Seventy-five million a year, 12 years for her education, is approximately $900 million that will be spent on their education. And in the report that we had presented, you will see, you can see there is not much of a future for them to come home to and live in Dare County based on the current, current housing trends. That's why we're calling this a generational plan. It's not only for day, but it's for that next generation. Something in Donna's illustration that I wanna point out. When we talk about an average cost of housing in Nags Head at the 600, on your website, it's 707,000, I think, dollars. The down payment for that house at 20% is over $120,000. Do you see the dilemma that that next generation is in? Who is our future? So, in conclusion, we in Dare County, boards as yourselves, have grappled with many, many difficult issues in our county. Water was one of them for Nags Head and the beaches. Beach nourishment. I hate to even mention schools. That issue. But through dedicated, determined leadership, we've tackled those issues. We have to tackle this issue for our economy to survive, which is approximately $2 billion. Some would say, "Well, they can move someplace else. They can go somewhere else. They can live someplace else." I would say that we who are living here today don't wanna go someplace unless we retire and go someplace by choice. So, I look forward to continuing this conversation and having input of the leadership such as yours to how we address this issue. So, as I say at the close of each meeting or each talk, if you have questions, Donna is sitting right there. And she is quite capable of answering your questions. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And we do have resources on our own board with Mayor Pro Tem Sears and Town Manager Andy Gorman, who are participating in this process, are also available. Yes, Donna?
I was just standing up here in case you had any questions.
Board members?
I do have one question, and this might be for Commissioner Sears also. Have you guys locate or identified any possible sites specifically in Nags Head?
Well, no, not specifically in Nags Head. And so, the report has a, several aerial tax records in there of most of the sites. There's some on Roanoke Island. There's, there, in the report, there's a photo of what you guys are doing with your housing there for your lifeguards. We just included that in there because that's happening. You guys don't own as much land as some of the other local governments in Dare County, and so, the sites in Nags Head haven't been developed. And when we first started looking at land, we were doing public and private ownership, and then, we quickly realized that we needed to focus on the public land instead of the private because we didn't want to not, we didn't wanna miss somebody. And, you know, Bob come in and say, "Well, you know, Donna talked to John, but she didn't talk to us." And so, we set that aside for right now. But to my recollection, the only property that's identified in the report for Nags Head is the life savings, where you guys are doing the lifeguards. Yeah. But there's a couple of sites on Roanoke Island, a couple of sites on Hatters Island.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sears?
No questions for Ms. Creve.
Mr. Sanders?
No, I don't have any questions. But obviously, this is a big problem for our community and surrounding communities. And thank you for your presentation and the work that you're doing on this. And I'm glad to see that you're having some success with the small scale because I think that's really important. And I think the larger scale kinda scares people, and it's been successful on the small scale, so.
Right. And the other thing that I think is contributing to that is the North Carolina residential code has changed. Where it used to be just one and two family structures, now it's up to four. And so, that represents a cost savings for property owners and developers. And when we were there in Dare County the other day, I think there's actually, the planning director told me that there's four different structures under construction on Roanoke Island and in Hatters combined that are, that are the quadruplexes or the triplexes, taking advantage of that change in the building code. So, we're hoping that that leads to some naturally occurring housing in the private sector.
That would be great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Donna.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate it. Thank you, Malcolm. Appreciate your time this morning. We are running about 10 minutes over our time-specific items, and our presenters are here. Let me ask you how time-constrained you are. I'm wondering if I can give the board a five-minute break, or do we need to roll on and let individual board members take their breaks? Okay, thank you, Malcolm. All right, then the board will recess for five minutes.
...asking some questions about, you know, what was going on with the repair of the waterline that goes under the sound, indicated that you all may have had some concerns. And rather than me trying to relay that to him, and then he has some questions, and he calls me back, and then he talks to you, and you have a question, I, I told him I'll just come, sort of tell you what we're doing, uh, and then be available to answer any questions. And, um, William Nash, our utilities director, he's here with me, and so, uh, like Malcolm, if it gets a little bit too deep, I've got somebody here with all the answers as well. So, we're in good shape there. So, as you all know and are aware, that waterline broke, um, sometime back, and the waterline brings water from the Skycow Water Plant over here to serve the beach. It takes both the RO plant in Kill Devil Hills, as well as the Skycow Plant, to meet our seasonal water needs. This time of year, it's not an issue, but when we get into mid-June and through the season, then we can't meet the water needs, uh, up on the beaches without, uh, the capacity of both of those plants. And so, when that broke, there was some haste on our part. We needed to do something quickly. Um, part of the problem is it's a sixteen million dollar fix. The good news is, in our reserve fund for water, we had sixteen million dollars, because we save for these kinds of catastrophes, because we know that when something breaks in a water plant, it's expensive. There's nothing cheap about making water. And so, we have the money. William went out and almost immediately ordered the pipe, because the killer on the timeline is the lead time it takes to get the pipe. The pipe that goes under the sound is a thirty-inch pipe. It's this big, and they have to bore it under the sound. Um, and so, he ordered that, and it's here, we, we've got it and all that. And we then solicited bids and did the things we have to do, and got a contract in, and the, the contractor started Monday, right, on the third. Um, and so, they're there working now. If you've driven by there, you've seen them, you may have seen some of those big pipes out there. Um, so, they're, they're on that now. Our contract calls for that to be completed April thirtieth. Um, our season kinda really begins, and our water demands really begin about mid-June, when the schools get out. And so, we've got, you know, a month and a half of lead time, even if we have some weather days or whatever where they can't work. William tells me that's really not gonna be an option, because once they start boring, and once those, those pipes are so big, they can't stop. It's kind of a continuous process, and if you stop, it, it messes up the system. So, they're confident, William's confident, that that April thirtieth timeline is, is gonna be fine, and even if we miss it a few days, it won't matter, because we've got until mid-June. And so, that process is underway. Um, they're working from both sides at the same time, so they're, they're coming in from the north and the south and meeting the middle, and, you know, that helps with them, makes it faster, makes it better for us. And so, all those things are in place, and I, I tell you all that to assure you that at least on all the information we have now, unless something goes crazy wrong, uh, then we're good to go, and we don't really have any water concerns, and there's no issues or no reason for the public to be alarmed or anything like that. This is one of the things that happens. We've had waterlines break all the time. We've had the one that goes to Hatters Village break a couple of times, and we have ways to manage all that sort of thing. Um, if, God forbid, something happened and we weren't finished, then there are some other plans, or some other things we might could do to, to solve water in a short-term basis, and William has worked on those kinds of things as well. Um, and so, with all that said, you know, the last resort is always water conservation, which we hope we don't get to, but, uh, if we do, there's a plan for that. There's a contract between the towns and the county, and there's a process in how you deal with that, too, if you have to do that. But we should not get there. Everything's on track. They're working hard, um, and that timeframe as well within their capability, so we don't expect any problems at all.
Okay.
That's what I have. I don't know if you have questions, but I'm glad to answer if you do.
Okay.
I do not, thank you. Can you explain a little bit about how the process is, excuse me, is gonna be, and how much noise you can expect? I hear it's gonna be a little loud, shaky, et cetera, so forth. I mean, going eighty, of course, you're going eighty feet under, right?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Uh, the waterline will be bored down from both sides at a slight angle, and then once they hit eighty feet, they'll do the horizontal drill to pop back up to the other side. Um, the majority of the noise that's gonna be heard is gonna be in the initial phases of the construction. Um, if you were to visit the bridge site right now, you'll see some fifty-four-inch steel casing. And that steel casing is what's gonna, what's gonna make those slight inclines down to eighty foot, and that has to be hammered in, just like you would, uh, pile driving operation. Um, and speaking with the contractor, that's typically the noise you're gonna hear, you know, if anyone's ever been around marine construction, when you hear that pile drive, that boom-boom, that's what you're gonna have for about three weeks on both sides. So, you'll hear that a little bit on Pirate's Cove side, and then it'll switch to the Nag's Head over by Pond Island, and you'll have the same thing there. Um, we've spoken with the homeowners, every, on everyone with Pond Island, I've reached out to all of them. Um, I've given, given them my information in case they need, so, in case something needs to be addressed. Contractors run over something, break something, they've all got my number. If they have concerns, they can reach out to me. But as far as a noise level, they anticipate it being somewhere between eighty and ninety decibels on the outside. You know, by the time you get into the interior of a home, that shouldn't be too bad. And it, that noise level will be during normal working hours. You won't experience that at ten or eleven at night when anyone's trying to sleep, so, that's kinda what we're expecting noise-wise.
That's some of my concern, is just what hours it, it's gonna take place, and how much noise you're gonna hear.
Yes, sir. Like I said, it'll, it'll be typically, um, when they start driving that pipe, you're gonna have roughly a ten-to-twelve hour working day on their part.
Okay. No other questions? Thank you.
Commissioner, anywhere?
No questions.
Um, are, assuming you'll track your infrastructure and age and replacement and that sort of thing, are there other projects coming up in Nag's Head in the, you know, do you have a projection? Do you, are you aware of anything else that might come up in Nag's Head in the next year or two?
Uh, no, sir. Nothing that we're expecting. We, to be honest with you, this was not expected.
Well, no, sure.
Um, so, the, the lifespan of the pipe that's currently there was supposed to be a hundred-year lifespan, but due to the sand and the silt and all that kind of intrusion and the salt water, it was cut extremely short. Um, we have looked at the other projects and the other areas of concern, and through Nag's Head and throughout the rest of the county, there's nowhere near of a concern, you know, such as this bridge.
Okay.
And speaking to that lifespan, the, the old pipe that was put down was laid on the bars and pushed over the edge, and it wasn't bored, and so, it was laid on the top, and over time, it settles and the set, the sediment comes over top of it. And that contributes to the erosion and the reduction in the life of the pipe. Taking it down eighty feet minimizes the exposure to those elements, and we hope to get some of the correct lifespan out of this pipe.
Right. Okay. All right, very good.
Eighty feet. That's amazing.
All right. If there are no other questions, we really, we do appreciate y'all coming in today and just updating us.
Sure, and if you have other questions, or your citizens do, then have Andy get with me, and we'll get you some answers.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And, um, with that, we will proceed to our eleven o'clock time-specific item, which is a presentation on the Fall Beach Monitoring Survey.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, back in October, the board authorized a, a fall survey to go ahead and capture some of the storm conditions that we had seen in late summer and early fall, which resulted in some shoreline changes, especially in the southern end of town. Um, there was, subsequently, there was a field survey that was conducted, and an analysis that has been performed by Moffitt and Nickel, who is here today to go ahead and give you a report on those results. Copies of this report were handed out to the board, uh, earlier, and, uh, we will go ahead and post this information on our website for residents to go ahead and review. And so, without further ado, I'm going to ask Beth Shadone from Moffitt and Nickel to come up and present the, uh, results of the fall survey.
Thank you. Thank you, David. Thanks very much, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, it's a pleasure always to be here with you. Um, as David mentioned, we're just going to be reviewing, um, the results of the fall monitoring, and then at the end, we'll provide a brief update on the progress on the next re-nourishment project, which may be conducted in summer twenty-six or summer twenty-seven. So, this is our outline. I'm gonna go through the data collection methodology, um, talk about the summary of findings, um, how that relates to how the twenty-nineteen beach re-nourishment project is performing, um, put this in the context of the master plan and those trigger volumes that we have established to provide equivalent level protection throughout the town. This figure shows, um, the area that was surveyed for the fall monitoring. This is a, um, a subset of the transects that are normally monitored every summer. Um, this is where we were focused primarily on what we call the nourished oceanfront, the reaches that have previously had, um, beach nourishment projects. Um, Reach One being kinda north of Jeanette's Pier. Um, Reach Two is kinda from Jeanette's Pier south, um, to, Reach Three north and Three south are some of the more erosive areas of the community, and then Reach Four probably has the highest historical erosion rates. Um, there were some additional, um, profiles that were surveyed within the Cape... There were some additional profiles that were surveyed within the Cape Hatters National Seashore, just to kind of make sure we were following the trends that were happening in that area as well. This purpose of this slide is just to kind of remind everyone how we are computing the shoreline change. When we think about shoreline, we are actually considering the mean high water shoreline, which is a specific elevation of one point one eight feet in ABD eighty-eight. So, what we're doing there is we're just looking at how has that contour moved over time, like from June until November or whatever timeframe? So, at that mean high water elevation, we're measuring that difference in position, whether it either be accretion or erosion. When we compute volumes, this figure shows kind of the different elevations we're computing volumes above. When we want to capture what's happening to the dune, we look at the volume changes above an elevation of plus six feet in ABD eighty-eight. And then, for the sub-aryal beach, that's above that mean high water contour, that plus one point one eight feet. The recreational beach, kind of where people are swimming, surfing, so forth like that, that is extending from the mean high water down to the minus six-foot contour. The outer sandbar that's breaking waves and providing protection is measured above the minus fourteen-foot elevation. And kind of those are sort of in the yellow shown really what is absorbing the wave energy and protecting the infrastructure of the town. We're also measuring changes above the depth of closure, which is kind of the elevation beyond which sand isn't really moving all that much. So, that's elevation minus nineteen feet in ABD eighty-eight. And then, we do extend the profiles all the way out to the minus thirty-foot contour, just to capture kind of what is happening in that offshore area. This figure shows the wave heights that occurred between that normal summer annual monitoring survey in June and then the survey that happened end of October, beginning of November. You can see that potential tropical cyclone eight occurred. That was kind of our highest wave heights that were measured with wave heights around eight point six feet at the max. There, as you can see, there were three events that were over eight-foot significant wave heights, that's that dash red line during that timeframe. And as David indicated, there were some observable scarping and shoreline erosion that was sort of the impetus for doing this survey to identify what was happening. So, this shows by reach. Again, reach one being the north and reach four being the southernmost part of town. This shows the changes above, I mean, of each volume above each contour. So, you see the dune changes in the orange bar. Reach one lost some dune between June and October. Reach two actually gained a little bit. Reach three south and reach four, significant dune erosion between June and October. Oops, let me go back. The changes above the mean high water are the purple bar. So, across all of the reaches, there were losses above the mean high water, which I think folks who've been out to the beach recognize that. They, that was observable dry beach erosion that occurred. But then, once we get to the, above the minus six contour in reach one and reach two, there was actually some accumulation between June and October. Down in reaches three north, three south and reach four, in three north and three south, there were some losses with the purple bars above mean high water. And then, above the minus six, and then in reach four, there was actually some accumulation above the minus six in the nearshore area. But the primary change that happened between June and October is in this yellow bar. You can see all of those are bigger. Mainly, that is indicating that the offshore sandbar grew bigger and moved a little bit nearer to shore. So, there were actually net accumulation, which we didn't necessarily expect just from looking at the beach, but there was net accumulation in that outer bar. So, there wasn't actually, so there wasn't actually sediment lost from the system, just from the dry beach that we're all seeing in the dune. And then, the changes above minus nineteen, there was some accumulation across most of the reaches. And then, the very offshore area, there was some, there were some changes, negative changes in reach one and reach two in that more offshore area and a little bit of small gains in reach three north. So, that's just kind of what happened between June and when we did this fall survey in This, these are actually specific representative profiles, just to kind of talk through what actually happened in each of the reaches. In reach one, we typically saw some dune scarping. So, basically, that dune somewhat eroded when high water levels reached the toe of the dune, moved some of that material to the nearshore. So, the red that you see in this figure is losses, green is accumulation. In reach one, in this particular example, the sandbar actually moved a little bit to the offshore and some of that farther offshore, deeper material, what seems to be moving out of the system in the offshore in reach one. For reach two, there's material kind of in the lower elevations accumulating both into the dry beach and also into the sandbar. You can really see sandbar growth in the offshore in reach two. And then, the, a little bit of redistribution of sediment from the offshore, either moving onshore to the bar or offshore out of the system. In reach three north, there was actually some dune scarping again during those high water level events, but then some deposition in the dry beach area and some growth of the sandbar in reach three north. The offshore material redistributed, we think some of that moved onshore, some of that probably moved offshore as well. In reach three south, we saw some pretty dramatic dune erosion and scarping and also reach three south had the highest rates of shoreline erosion during this June to October timeframe. But there was deposition in the bar, which you can see in that green. And then, again, consistent with the other reaches, the offshore material seems to be being redistributed, some of it moving into the bar and some of it likely moving out of the system. And finally, reach four at the southern part of town, again, some significant dune scarping, but accumulation in the nearshore and in the bar and redistribution of that offshore material, similar to the reach three south. And just because sometimes pictures are a little more dramatic than line drawings, we wanted to include a couple of the images from last fall in reach three south, where you can see really that, you know, kind of brings home that red graph from the previous slide as a picture. So, you can see some pretty significant dune scarping, dune erosion, shoreline change. So, where there isn't that much of a dry beach, every time the water is elevated and the waves are high, you know, it's kind of affecting the dune in that reach. And similarly, the conditions are similar in reach four with a pretty narrow dry beach and some significant dune scarping that was observed in the fall. So, now, this slide is a bar graph that shows the shoreline changes all the way from before the beach nourishment project in 2019. So, those first green bars on the left are from August, a survey that was done after the beach nourishment project was in place. So, that's why those are all like, yes, the shoreline advanced seaward quite a bit during that timeframe. And then, you see kind of through the years from 2020 through October twenty-four, how that has varied. The most significant changes that we wanted to point out were down in reach three south, which you kind of saw in that last picture. The actual shoreline condition in reach three south is probably on the order of thirty feet landward of where it was prior to the beach nourishment project in 2019. So, there's some kind of localized situations where there's been quite a bit of shoreline erosion. Reach four is somewhat to landward or more eroded than the condition before that project as well, but not as significantly as, as reach three south that you see there in the circled red box. This slide is looking at the dune changes, similarly by reach, all the way from after the 2019 project through the 2024 October survey. There has actually been accumulation in the dunes over time since that project in reach one, reach two and reach three north. There's been a little bit of net erosion, somewhat net erosion in reach three south, but in reach four, the dunes are actually smaller than they were. All like, basically, all of the material, oops, all of the material from the placement has been lost in reach four. All of the, all of the reaches too, I want to point out. So, if you start comparing the blue, which was the summer survey and kind of this brown color, which was the October, a lot of the reaches do have some dune impacts, except for reach two, that occurred during that short timeframe from June through the end of October. And now, this one looks at the total volume change above that depth of closure of the minus nineteen, again, comparing to the conditions before the 2019 project. So, for, for reaches two and, and four, all the way through two through four, the brown bar's a little bit higher than the blue bar from June and they experienced some recovery, primarily just in that offshore bar. So, not something that we would see by just going out there, but that sand is present there building at the offshore bar. Again, similar to what's shown with the dune, these southern reaches are of most concern when you start comparing the amount of material there compared to the project, post-project Now, this one shifts what we're looking at. Instead of having reach one, two, three, four, now we have all of the different elevations. So, the dune, and this is all of the profiles across the entire nourished ocean front. So, the leftmost is the dune above the plus six, so net across the entire nourished ocean front. There's been additional gains since the project. And then, you see varying changes across all of the other elevations, but the one we want to draw your attention to in the red circle is that there was significant accretion experienced above the minus fourteen and that's what we pointed out previously in the yellow bars, above the minus fourteen elevation with that sandbar moving nearshore and growing across the entire beach. Now, we showed a similar slide to this with the master plan triggers during the summer monitoring review. So, as a reminder, we've established these volumetric triggers that we want to have at least this much volume per linear foot of beach in cubic yards to provide that level of protection across the town. We're in kind of a similar situation as we were in the summer, where there are some localized areas, which you see in the, in the yellow and the red arrows, where the yellow arrows are nearing the volumetric triggers and the red arrows are localized areas that are actually below the volume triggers. So, there are some isolated places of concern. When you sort of aggregate everything into the individual reaches and compare them with the triggers, the town still is protected. So, in aggregate, those conditions are actually above the volumetric triggers, but because of this localized erosion, ongoing background erosion that has continued, the Board has authorized planning for the next nourishment project to begin. And so, this is my segue into, into talking about that as soon as I summarize the findings from the fall survey. So, essentially, the beach volume showed some recovery from summer conditions to the fall, but it was mainly in that region of that sandbar. Conditions in the southern reaches of town, you know, are still a cause for concern. There was quite a bit of shoreline erosion in reach three south that occurred since that summer survey. And there has been ongoing dune scarping as those high water level on wave events occur in reach three south and reach four. Does anybody have questions about the monitoring before I just do a brief summary about the project?
Anybody?
Okay. And so, again, this project is currently planned for either summer 2026 or summer 2027, kind of depending on conditions and bids that the town receives. We are targeting having everything aligned such that the town would retain the option to do it in 26, but also the option to wait until 27. We're currently working in the preliminary design phase. We've developed some preliminary volumes. Right now, for the permitting, we're looking at something between two point four million cubic yards up to a maximum of three million cubic yards, just so the town has the option to place more materials should bids be favorable. We are working on drafting the permit drawings and a bathymetric survey of the borough area has been scheduled and I think McKimmon Creed will be out doing that as soon as conditions are favorable. On the permitting and regulatory side, we did hold the agency scoping meeting last Thursday, January thirtieth. We received some great feedback from the agencies and we're incorporating that into our design and permit applications. And just a brief summary of the, of our schedule right now with some milestones, we are anticipating submitting the permit applications at the end of March of this year. Typically, the permit review process is about six months, so we would anticipate receiving those permits end of September. Advertising for bids, October twenty-five, and then conducting the ward contract negotiations through December of this year with construction to take place either, as I said, summer twenty-six or twenty-seven, depending upon the conditions and the bids and the Board's decisions. Thanks so much. Any questions?
Obviously, we're a long, we're a long way from actually bidding and placing any sand, but do you have, for what would be a comparable-sized project, any recent pricing on a yard basis?
That's a tough one. We've seen with other projects, not necessarily with the towns, we've seen some higher pricing, particularly in mobilization, on some other projects that have been occurring in the southern part of town, I mean, southern part of the state, not part of town, but yeah, so it's kind of, it's kind of a tough question. Our estimator is currently working on the preliminary opinion of probable cost, so we'll be providing that to the Board when we, when we kind of have those numbers, I think, a little firmer.
Sure. Okay. Questions?
No questions. Thank you.
May I trouble to ask you, since you've already started planning and we've got this new report, have you identified the areas that you would target for the beach nourishment?
Oh, yes, sir. We, this would be a town-wide, this would be a nourished ocean front-wide project. So, it would be these reaches that have been previously nourished, reach one, two, three north, three south and reach four. So, it'd be the whole, it'd be the whole nourished ocean front that has been nourished in the past.
Not specialized, heavier on one end, specialized, heavier in certain areas?
Yeah, so typically, those larger erosion rates towards the southern part of town would typically, we, we will, right now, the current plan is to place more material through the areas three south and four, where those conditions are significantly deteriorated and then reach three south and reach four. Right now, we're planning on rebuilding that dune, whereas the rest of the town's dunes are in pretty good shape. So, that would be a berm-only area. So, there would be just a beach berm placement in reach one, two and three north and then in reach three south and reach four, we'd be replaced, we'd be putting in a dune in addition to a berm to counteract the background erosion, if that makes sense.
No, it does, yeah. It matches up with your charts that you have.
Yes, sir.
That answered my question, no?
Okay.
It's really based on the level of protection.
It, it's really based on the level of protection, and so, you know, even though the erosion rate's higher, they place the amount of sand that would give the same level of protection across the border.
Yes.
My biggest concern was there's areas on the northern beaches that are eroding as well, and if we were just focusing on the south, then I would make the suggestion, look at some of those areas on the berm in the north.
Yes, that's currently the plan, yes, sir. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. John, that brings us to public comment, believe it or not. So I'll turn it over to John Leidy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for your patience. Now is the time when the board invites members of the public to provide comment to the board. This is not an opportunity for dialogue, and the board rarely responds to public comment, but for anyone who wishes to comment on matters of interest or concern, if you will please go to the podium, start by telling us your name and where you live, and then I will let you know when your time is just about up. Yes, ma'am?
I think it's still good morning. My name is Mary Kelly, and I live in Nags Head. Do we, the town of Nags Head, have a plan? Does the town of Nags Head Police have a plan for when the immigration and custom enforcement agents come to Nags Head schools, restaurants, and churches? For as we know, an executive order was signed on January 20th, 2025, an executive order setting out a series of aggressive immigration enforcement actions, which would permit enforcement activities in schools, churches, and other previously protected areas. Are we prepared to be respectful, supportive, kind, and protective of our community of immigrants? Those with proper documentation, and those who may not be citizens or have the proper documentation, but work here, live here, pay taxes here, and are our friends and neighbors? Have the conversations started between the town leaders and community leaders on how to respond, or how to be proactive by showing our support to these people? How to help them live in this uncertainty? Is it my imagination that current construction sites of new homes have become quieter? Where are the workers? Has attendance within our schools been affected recently? Are our local restaurants having challenges with staff showing up for work? How are we, as a community, going to show our support to our immigrant citizens and friends? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Does anybody else wish to address the board? If not, at this time, we will conclude the public comment session.
Thank you. That brings us to our consent agenda, which you have before you, with a few items, and a motion to approve would be in order.
I'll make that motion, ma'am.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Then that brings us to reports and recommendations from the Planning and Development Director and Planning Board. Kelly?
Thank you, good morning. Let me share my screen real quick. Okay. I don't have a whole lot for you today, and I know it's been a long morning, so I'll kind of breeze through these things, and if you have any questions, just let me know. At our last planning board meeting, they did elect their chair and vice chair. They received an update on the work plan from the Planning and Development Department for the coming year. They had a great presentation on the Dark Skies Bright Stars Initiative, and we continue to have conversation about accessory dwelling units. I did provide in the director's report just some bullet points about the highlights of where we're at with that. There are some new definitions being proposed, attached accessory dwelling unit or accessory apartment, detached accessory dwelling unit or backyard cottage, aligning our short-term rental partial home definition, and some clarity on what a sleeping room is, in terms of how we would consider allowing ADUs, thinking about allowing these attached ADUs to be permitted townwide, considering allowing detached ADUs to only be allowed on lots that are larger than 16,000 square feet, which would be consistent with our large residential requirements, and to allow both types, both attached and detached, to be rented on a short-term basis and a long-term basis. As you know, right now, we do allow short-term, but we do not allow long-term. And so from community input, we felt like there was a little bit of an inequity there, so considering those changes. As you know, ADUs must be subordinate to the principal structure, so the planning board discussed a maximum size of 800 square feet or 50% of the principal structure's area, whichever is less. I mean, we talked about a parking standard, looking at one space per ADU plus one additional space for each bedroom beyond the first. The next meeting of the planning board is going to be February 18th. We have a text amendment request submitted by Nags Head AD7 LLC to increase the number of fuel dispensers allowed at fueling stations and to increase the size of convenience stores associated with fueling stations. We also have a text amendment submitted, which would allow outdoor stands as an accessory use to general retail. Right now, we only allow those as an accessory to shopping centers, but this would allow it just at a, at a general retail site. We did not have any Board of Adjustment hearings in January. We did have a meeting of the Septic Health Advisory Committee. That was recent, that was just last week, January 27th. Staff provided an update on the program activity for the current fiscal year. We've had 92 septic tank inspections, 42 pump-out credits have been provided, and we're at five septic loans currently that are in process. It was consensus of the committee that staff should explore new marketing strategies to try to increase participation in the program. As you may remember, the decentralized wastewater management plan had an expectation that these numbers would continually increase over the years, so we're not quite seeing that, so maybe some new strategies to, to get the word out to folks is necessary. The committee also recommended considering an increase in the pump-out credit from $150 to $250, given that to have an average residential tank pumped today costs about 500. So bumping it to that 250 would cover about half. Staff also updated the committee on where we intend to put our four new water quality loggers. We're looking at South Colony Drive on the north end, Old Cove Road by the canal, Bonnet Street Bath House, and Doughty Park. Currently working to get those locations surveyed and arranged to have those wells to be drilled before we can install the loggers. Estrian Shoreline Management Plan, kind of the, the main thing that happened there was we did have a scoping meeting with all the agencies that would be involved with permitting. There's still some unknowns and questions lingering, but we'll continue that conversation with that. Sand relocation, I've provided numbers, it's continuing to go well, having a lot of participation. Permit turnaround within the planning department continues to be great, 2.5 to 2.25 days for permit turnaround, so I just want to thank everyone in the planning department. Hazard mitigation plan updates, wrapping up. You're probably going to have that before you March, April, to take action on that. And then, as far as Doughty Park events, we're working on our winter markets now. The next one is going to be this coming Saturday, February 8th, and then we're moving towards the summer season, so that's all I have for you in terms of our update. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
TW's proposal or request for outdoor stands, that, that amendment, is that food stands?
It is. They would like to, so currently, we allow a hot dog cart, ice cream cart, Italian fudge. We have these specific things that we allow in temporary outdoor stands. They would like to have an ice cream cart available at TW's. It's just right now, the code wouldn't allow that.
Okay, right, thank you. Can you scroll back up to the accessory dwelling?
Yes.
Discussion, please. I just want to ask if any of the commissioners have any questions or input at this point?
I don't, I'd like to, the long-term, I'd like to see put in on the ADUs. I don't know why that's not in there, I guess it was overlooked at first, they're just old, but, and the size, 600, 800, I think. Sounds good.
So you think they're in the right range?
I think they're in the right range, between the 600 and 800, yes, and, and the short-term and the long-term. What are we looking at at short-term, just 30?
So that's 30, 30 days or less.
Mr. Sears?
The attached ADUs, I'd, I'd have a concern of 800 square feet. If you have 1,000 square feet up and 1,000 square feet down, then already there, are we not considering those properties? I mean, as our history lesson earlier showed in the eighties, when that report came out, that's exactly when all these 1970s homes got enclosed on the ground level, which become non-conforming. So if this ADU would allow these to be conforming through some kind of mechanism, you going to ask those houses to shorten to 800 square feet underneath when the majority are 960 and larger for that size and age of house?
No, it's a good thing to bring up and to think about. In your scenario, having 1,000 on your top floor, or your, you know, your first floor, and then 1,000 with an enclosure below, that's really resembling more of a duplex. So an accessory dwelling unit has always implied a subordinate, a lesser number than your principal. Those that are not subordinate really rise up to that level of what we would now consider duplex, which I think is, continues to be a conversation with our duplex regulations. Right now, you can't have a duplex unless you have a lot that's 22,500 square feet, and there's a lot of other requirements that go along with having a duplex, so yeah, there's certainly those homes out there that do, the, the first and ground are just carbon copies of each other. It wouldn't be captured with these revisions unless we start to talk about doing something different with duplex use.
And then on the permitting, great timeframe on that, I know Mr. Commissioner Fuller would be extremely happy with 2.2 days or 2.25 days. My, my question is, though, how efficiently are we using the online portal for permitting? Are we maximizing the use of that online portal for permitting? Because those are the, the questions that I'm getting from contractors.
Sure. I can put together a report for you on that next time. It's my understanding that there's various versions of air permitting system, some are cloud-based. I don't think that's the one that we have. Things come easier in the cloud-based version, but I'm not telling you we're using ours to its full potential right now. I think we're doing a good job with what we have, though, and I'll provide more details.
Thanks, Kelly.
Can I clarify a point, that the 600 to 800, I was talking more about the detached ADUs, and I think Commissioner Sears brought up a good point about the enclosed ones, so just want to clarify that, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you for your presentation, Kelly. I, I like seeing the long-term rentals. I'm not sure for short-term rentals, I understand that we do have some attached short-term rentals already in Nags Head, but I don't know, do we have a need for more? And so when we're talking about ADUs, I just hope that we keep talking about long-term rentals and different mechanisms so that we can keep any additional detached ADUs or attached ADUs for long-term and not new short-term rentals.
Thus far, we haven't talked about deed restrictions around ADUs, but it's always on the table. Thank you.
I share a concern about, yeah, making sure that these are focused, yeah, to the extent that we're looking at this, ideally, you know, expanding the long-term and workforce potential. You know, I wonder, so, you know, th, these would be permitted, so there, I wonder, you know, if there might be other mechanisms other than deed restriction in terms of the permitting application and the, and the, and the maintenance of that, that might potentially be a tool for short-term versus long-term?
Something we could explore.
Thank you.
Is it, is it the desire of the board to focus the ADU conversation on long-term rentals?
I don't want to speak for the board, but for myself, yes.
I would agree with Commissioner Lambert that in 30-day or longer term would be better.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, and I thought, I think that's where we've, you know, in terms of what our community has asked for, you know, when we surveyed them and some of the conversations we've had over the last year or so, since that survey, are really geared toward, to the extent that we can, I understand that we have, we work within some legal limitations, but yes, the focus, I think, is on long-term rentals.
What about the question between detached versus attached? Is there any preferences there? I know the planning board, they've sort of come up with a, a standard for detached as needing a larger lot, but, but letting, allowing them in most every neighborhood in town, you know? Any thoughts on, on the detached versus attached?
Yes, I would say detached definitely, long-term.
Okay.
Because that would be a new.
And you may want to study your special districts on what you actually put in on that, because the last time ADUs came up, that was the holdup, was the special districts and allowing, you know, size of the lot would allow so many more detached units versus just one single detached ADU. So there needs to be clarification in that, not just left to an, you know, opinion of interpretation.
So some of the feedback, I mean, Kelly chime in, and I know Megan, planning board chair, and planning board members are here, but some of the feedback we've gotten so far is that there seems to be a le, less of a concern about the attached than the detached. Is that, do you think that's accurate?
Yeah, I, I would definitely say that there's less hesitation with the attached, there's more hesitation with the detached, especially as it starts to lend itself to like perceived density increases.
Well, that and your, most of the detached you see in other communities are on the, on the back corner of the property or away from the property, closer to your neighboring property. So then you run into the issue that the neighbor is now being inconvenienced because you pushed your ADU away, away from your own property.
Okay. Commissioner Lambert?
For attached versus detached, I definitely wouldn't want to see anyone outing short-term rental detached.
Yeah.
Because that would just...
Yeah, I, I think, I hadn't really thought it through, but I could see myself agreeing with that.
I have a question of the board. If we, not now, but, because I think there's still a lot to flesh out on this, probably more than we realized, but as we get closer, would it merit maybe doing a workshop with the planning board and the Board of Commissioners as we get closer in discussion? Not now, but down the road, it might be something to think about.
I think it probably would be, I think it probably would be. Yeah, and I don't know what plan, additional plans there may be for public input, but...
The planning board, you know, has, has got a basic framework now with definitions and sort of a menu of standards and where things could be allowed and in what circumstances. and sort of a menu of standards and where things could be allowed and in what circumstances. So, you know, probably getting pretty close to that timeline where, where the workshop would, would be useful. You know, groups could come together, the board and the planning board, and sort of talk through the menu of standards and what's acceptable. I don't know, we're probably getting close to that point.
I would think so.
And to Commissioner Sears' point, I mean, you could, if detached ADUs were ever allowed, you could increase the setbacks on them, correct? I know they'd have to adhere to, you know, today's setbacks, but.
So, you know, yes, to that, a detached ADU might perhaps have to meet the principal structure setbacks. So the same that the, the single family, the principal structure would, so. That's something that we can explore with the planning board, maybe provide some renderings to help them visualize that.
Well, I mean, and that's an interesting notion about whether it would adhere to the same setbacks or not. I mean, my, Commissioner Sears made a good point about the potential impact of a detached unit closer to an adjoining property lot. Generally, my thinking has been that, you know, the, the impact is the impact. I mean, it's regardless whether it's attached, detached, under the house or stuck on the side or whatever, because it's traffic generation. You know, how many trips does it generate? That doesn't change. But noise and enjoyment of the adjacent property is also important. And, you know, they all affect that to some degree, but I could see some circumstances where detached unit abutting in adjoining property could be a greater problem for the neighbor than, than, and cause enforcement issues as, as well.
Alright. I think that's what we need, very helpful. I appreciate everybody's input in the conversation and we'll go back to the planning board.
Okay, thank you. You're gonna stay there, Kelly?
I believe I am.
Talk to us about residential yard signage.
Okay, I've put a little presentation together. It's not too many slides. Just with what we're currently allowing. So for a single-family into family dwelling, we allow both permanent and temporary signage. Temporary signs, I've spelled out up here what those are. They have to be reasonably maintained and they shall be removed when the activity or event is over. They can't be illuminated. You can have a six-square-foot sign in area, thirty-six inches in height on lots, where you have an active, unexpired building permit. And you can have one sign per permit, but you can't exceed thirty-two square feet. Those signs have to be removed within thirty days of the issuance of the certificate of compliance or the CO. You can have a freestanding, non-illuminated temporary sign, also six square feet, thirty-six inches in height, on a site that is actively listed for sale. You can have a, a sign stating that there's a real estate agent on site. And then we have a provision there for signs or banners that are associated with a special event. So those are all the temporary signage allowances that we have. So then we come to permanent signs. And I didn't include this in here, but the greater part of 2015 was spent talking about permanent signs as it relates to rental signs and things of that nature. So, all property shall be permitted to contain one sign, not to exceed six square feet in area, placed on the wall of the principal structure. Where the principal structure is greater than a hundred feet from the right-of-way, you can have an additional sign. But it has to meet specific criteria. The sign shall not be greater than three square feet in area, also thirty-six inches in height. It cannot obstruct visibility for vehicles coming and going within your driveway. And then we did have an amortization period for this, which has obviously lapsed. So we believe most everybody's in compliance with this regulation now. You can have one bulletin board sign, not to exceed sixteen square feet, for church or non-commercial institution. You can have a non-illuminated sign, not over one square foot, attached to the side of your home if you have an approved home occupation there. You can have a wall-mounted, non-commercial identification sign, six square feet in area on your wall for any single or two family hous- homes. You can also have a freestanding, non-commercial identification sign, not to exceed three square feet. So those are the types of allowable permanent signage. I did put some examples in here. So for your signage that would be allowed against the wall of your principal structure, you're looking at six square feet. This is predominantly what you see that meets that criteria. We talked about when your house is more than a hundred feet away from the road, you can have an additional sign closer to the road for visibility. So that's what these signs represent. So when you see those, typically that home is going to be further away. And then our permanent, non-commercial identification signs, those are like cottage names of your house. So those are just some examples there. And then we also allow freestanding in addition to the wall-mounted. And these are some examples that we currently have in town. There's many. But for these signs, they have to be three square feet in area. There is no height really associated with them. Here's just two examples of how they've both been taken advantage of. On the one slide, you have your two wall-mounted signs. You've got your commercial rental sign as well as your non-commercial cottage identification sign. On the other photograph, you have your two examples of freestanding signage, your commercial rental sign as well as the non-commercial identification sign for the home. Last slide I have, as far as temporary signage, I did want to highlight, we do have the criteria that states you can have one sign, not to exceed six square feet in area, three feet in height on lots where you have an active, unexpired building permit. That sign has to be removed thirty days after the issuance of the CO. This is just an example of what that would look like. I'll go back. We have had a request that the town consider allowing that commercial signage that we currently, currently say you can have wall-mounted, but if your home is more than a hundred feet away, you can have it out by the road as well. To allow that type of signage, whether your home is or is not a hundred feet away, so any home, regardless of the distance from the right-of-way, would be able to have that additional commercial-based signage. So I did want to let everyone know that we have had that request made. Just to follow up, this is my last slide. This has really never been an issue. Historically, when our code enforcement had noticed something like this, they just called the contractor or builder up, let them know. The sign was gone the next day. I think three or four times over the course of ten-plus years, a notice actually had to be written up, but it was immediately remedied. So nothing has ever escalated to this point. That's the presentation I have for you today, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioner Lambert.
Kelly, when you said that there, could you re, explain that there has been a request to put signs, would that just be the house name signs? Or would that be like the repair signs?
It would be, well, so we are content neutral, but we do have the ability to redesign to the extent to determine is it commercial or non-commercial. But we can't regulate necessarily what's on it. So what they're looking, what they would like is to have this, like this Village Realty for Rent, that's considered a commercial sign. The Sun, the Sun Realty, the four-nine-two-B, that sign's considered commercial. This Carolina Design sign, that would be considered commercial. So the request has been for we allow this wall-mounted sign, but you can only have the additional sign if your home is a hundred feet away, to allow that additional commercial sign regardless of the location of your home in relation to the roadway.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Not for Kelly, but just for clarification from our attorney. Are we within, are we legal in everything that we're doing in your opinion as far as the control or the regulation of signage?
I think your current ordinance is, is consistent with the Gilbert case, which, when that came down, whatever the year was, 2019, 2016, we retooled the ordinance, which was at that time consistent with North Carolina legislation that authorized distinctions to be made based on the type and content of signs. That was all struck down by the Gilbert case. So we retooled the ordinance at that time, and I believe it's still consistent with the requirements at that case. But as Kelly said, your real, real authority here is to regulate based on time, place, manner, size, location, those things without regard to the content. So, you know, you do have a lot of restrictions on that.
And with the clarification of content, following a lot of commercial versus non-commercial, could that be a, something that someone should come on the town for?
I think it's problematic. I think what Kelly, she made a good point, which is really, you need to be able to regulate a sign without regard to what it says, because if you have to look at what it says, that's going into content. And so the regulations have to be content neutral. You know, there's, there's, and I haven't researched this since she began this presentat- or since she was preparing this presentation, but I wouldn't mind updating some of the case law. We did look at this a couple of years ago to see whether there had been any limitation on the Gilbert case. And at that time, there really hadn't accept that. There had been some, some authorities in other jurisdictions that treated commercial speech differently or with different protections under the First Amendment, which suggested that you might be able to make some distinctions. But, but I haven't looked at it, I haven't had to follow back up on it. That is something I'd like to look at.
I, I remember the discussions when we were writing the ordinance and that, you know, the terminology strict scrutiny. And, and when you were regulating non-commercial signage, there was a higher degree of scrutiny with regulating that ti- type of signage than with commercial signage. And I think that's how we ended up with the ordinance that we have that makes the distinction between commercial and non-commercial, recognizing that, you know, we probably have to be a little bit more flexible with non-commercial signs than the commercial signs. And I think that was the basis for the rules that we have. And I think the real issue here is, you know, some of these regulations carry over from when the ordinance was not content neutral. And you saw a lot of these yard signs that said for rent.
Yeah.
And the ordinance actually said that. So some of the, the ordinance was rewritten to attempt to preserve what it previously allowed. But, you know, the issue here would be, or the question here would be, do we want commercial yard signs as permanent signs in all of our residential neighborhoods? Because that's what the request is.
Yeah.
I have one other question for the town attorney. If we were to make any changes right now, for example, for that request, and every, let's say we made a change and everyone came back, we heard from a lot of residents that said, this is not what we want, this is not what we want. And if we were tried to change it back or fix it, would we be allowed to because of Bill 382?
You know, if you, first of all, if you adopt an ordinance now that would create any non-conformities, it would be invalid under 382. So if you create any non-conformities, that's when you end up with a problem under that legislation. I'm not sure if, if you adopt something now, if it would create, but if anybody had signs that were non-complying, I guess you would have non-conforming.
But if we wanted to allow more?
If you allow more, and that's what, again, when, when 382 was adopted, I looked back and I felt like for the last six months, everything that the town had done was not downzoning, it was expansion of uses. And so, and again, same thing here, if what you do only allow, doesn't change any uses or allows more use, fine. But again, I don't, without looking into it, I don't know if you're gonna end up creating some non-conforming signs by doing that. But again, you know, I feel like you do have the authority to require that signage be placed, all, all signage be placed on the structure or only in the yard. Or if they're gonna be in the yard, then they meet certain dimensional requirements. Because all that's content neutral, you know, again, it's all about where you locate them or the number of signs, you know? Those are, those are other things. So, you know, or if you, if you regulate commercial structures differently than you regulate residential structures. Again, I think that's another way of getting to the same kind of thing without addressing the, the content.
But if we allow more signs, we wouldn't, that would be considered upzoning.
That's correct. But again, if you, but then the problem would be if you wanted to go back, then you'd have a problem.
I don't think the issue is more signs. I think the issue is content. And I, I just don't want the town to be liable in a situation if this particular person pursues some legal. Based on, based on content.
Right, right. So, let me ask that question, because I, so when we look at the commercial signs, I mean, all the examples of commercial signs that we saw now in your, were essentially about the rental of the property on which the sign is placed.
Correct.
Are there examples in the town you know of where it's some other kind of commercial sign? I mean, is that, I, I've always assumed that, you know, I can't, I've assumed even on my own house that I can't put a Kahoon and Castin sign on my house because I'm advertising my firm, which is a mile away, and that's off-premise advertising.
True, and we had a restauranteur that closed down and advertised another site, and it's fine over that same issue too. But now we're content neutral, so can you actually find them over advertising off-site?
There's a commercial sign presented on my, if there's a permitted on my house, if there's, I can put anything on it.
Yeah, I mean technically, these are residential signs. Commercial signs would allow lights. We don't allow lights on them.
Yeah, so the regulation is six square feet on the wall of the principal structure. We can't regulate the content of it, but most homes, it is a for rent sign. It's got their rental number, the company doing the rental.
Sure.
That type of information. I'm sure there are others out there, but that's predominantly what we see.
Okay. For permanent signs. Commissioner Sanders, anything?
Nothing.
Right.
Man, I'm happy with the way it is now, so.
I would like to request that the attorney look into the legality of, of that due to the issue that has been brought forth on that particular Jones property.
Yes. No, I, I'd like to know that we're, well, I mean, I would like to, I, I like the way it is too, and I don't like the, yeah, so I'd like to know that it's legal or it's right or where we stand on that. So I think, yes, I think a legal opinion would be in order.
Okay.
It's gonna, it's gonna create a conundrum.
Yes.
Because if you decide that you have to strictly regulate time, place, and manner and can't make a distinction between commercial and non-commercial, you're either gonna be faced with eliminating the ability to have yard signs so that you don't have a proliferation of signs everywhere. Or you're, you're gonna, I'll have to allow them everywhere.
But you regulate how many signs everywhere?
Number.
You already regulate the size and number, and that's content neutral. And that's the argument, I think, that the town's being pushed on.
But so what, what Kelly was referring to, there's a, there's sort of an exception. If your structure is more than a hundred feet away from the right-of-way, we, we allow that additional sign. The theory is that you can't see the sign or read it because the house is too far back. That was an intentional exception. So if now we're saying that, you know, we can't.
So if now we're saying that, you know, we can't treat that commercial sign differently than a non-commercial sign, the town's either gonna have to eliminate all those yard signs that are commercial, or they're gonna have to allow them everywhere. But you're treating that commercial residential sign as a residential temporary sign that has a business on it, that we're looking at it content neutrally, but not content neutrally for physical reference. Does that make, I mean, is that explained correctly?
That's the conundrum.
I mean, but then we're already doing that.
Yeah, I know, but, and it's, you know, I think we're, I, I'd like to research it again, but I, I, my, my belief is that what the town adopted was consistent with the law at the time that it came down. But, um, but again, that, the case came down nine years ago now, and, um, there's probably been some, I know there's been some expansion on that or some retraction on it through the courts. The Supreme Court hasn't readdressed this since the Gilbert case, so, you know, but what the Fourth Circuit's done, which is our, um, the, the region that we're in, in, uh, North Carolina, that's what I'd like to take a look at.
It doesn't hurt for him to look at it.
No.
No?
Agree.
Anything else?
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Did we, yeah, did we order lunch for twelve thirty?
Uh, yeah, I think, I think so, yes.
Okay, all right, just so I know. Uh, committee reports, I'll start with Commissioner Sanders.
Um, I don't really have anything new, except the town staff did put a really nice report and link on the website for the Estor and Shoreline Committee. So if anybody is interested in finding out any more information about the Estor and Shoreline Committee, you can go on the town website. We'll explain everything about living shorelines and the grants and what the town is doing, so. It's a good source of information. Thank you.
All right, very good, thank you. Commissioner.
No updates from tourism, Antoni Kree presented for Housing Task Force.
Commissioner.
Yes, uh, last week, we met with the Septic Health Committee. Kelly gave an excellent update on that. The Hazard Mitigation Committee also met. I unfortunately was not able to attend because I was at the Government Access, Education Access Channel meeting at the same time. But Kelly did give a excellent update on that as well. We had our meeting for GEACC last week. Um, we discussed the film festival that we have been discussing. We've decided that we're going to look into possibly partnering with another pre-existing film festival since we're kind of new in it, and that would be a great way to hopefully get momentum for both ideas. We also discussed and voted on a slight increase to our budget, though I'll be discussing later at Budget Time, just to kind of help chat out with some of the administrative duties, so he's working more on content and stuff and not administrative duties. We also welcomed two new members, Kevin Lindgard from Duck and Michael Burris from Dare. And then we approved three LPDI grants for COA, Kitty Hawk, and Killable Hills. And that's all I've got.
Great, thank you. The only town committee on which I serve is Jeanette's Peer Advisory Committee, and unless I miss something, we've not, they have not met. It's been a while. I will tell you, um, that I had been appointed by Governor Cooper to the Offshore Wind Energy Task Force. With the change of administration, Governor Stein does not intend to continue that task force, so we've been dismissed. I will tell you that I have been contacted about the potential for a meeting with Governor Stein to gird air cells for another offshore oil, um, pushback. Unfortunately, that may, that may come around again. So that's, that's all that I have. That brings us to consideration of a pay plan update, and Chad. Chad, you've been waiting around all morning for this.
Hopefully, I won't take too much of your time. Uh, thank you for, uh, letting me come in here and talk to you guys this morning. I don't have a whole lot to present, but yeah, I brought to you a plan to increase our base pay, which is currently at nineteen dollars an hour. Uh, I was notified recently, within the last month, that, uh, neighboring towns, Kitty Hawk, be specific, would be raising their rate to nineteen fifty this summer from nineteen. I was notified through, uh, the Killable Hills Ocean Rescue Director that he was going to do the same presentation to, to get theirs raised to match Kitty Hawk. Outside of that, I was also contacted by Wrightsville Beach to see where we were. They were going to their town to raise their rate to twenty dollars an hour. So, I'm here for you this morning to request that we at least match, uh, local competition out here as far as recruiting staff and whatnot to go to at least nineteen and a half dollars for, for the summer ahead. Um, I think Amy's worked up the numbers and the budget adjustment, uh, put that together. I think it's at seventeen thousand five hundred to, to make that happen for the season ahead here. Is that correct? Sorry.
Yeah, I think that's what it would cost, like, for a whole year. But the budget amendment that we have is just gonna take us through the end of this fiscal year and the pay plan. So that would just cover us through this fiscal year.
Where was Wrightsville before they went to twenty? Were they at nineteen going to twenty?
No, they weren't. They were below that. I think they're, I think at seventeen.
Oh my.
They've been kind of low, below the market value. Um, I just tried to look that up recently. And then I know like Ocean City, Maryland, I looked them up, they're at twenty dollars an hour. And I think the, uh, Delaware Seashore is at the same thing. They're pretty competitive markets amongst themselves as well. So, that's kind of regionally where the, the market is at right now.
Chad, how does your bonus pay schedule compare to the?
To our neighbors and that sort of thing? I'm not sure locally where our neighbors are as far as, as that go. We all kind of do a little bit similar things. I know that, um, so I'm sorry, I don't have that information in front of me. I know, I was looking through Ocean City stuff. They do like signing bonuses instead of, uh, they do do some incentives to stay through the end of the season like we do. They do like a two hundred and fifty and five hundred dollar signing bonuses. They do incentives to stay through the end of the season. Everybody kind of has little different incentives to, to kind of engage people and, and recruit them. I know Kitty Hawk instituted some, we're on topic of housing and workforce housing and stuff here, and we're in the process of building some housing. I'm really thankful for that. Kitty Hawk started some lifeguard housing last season. I think they turned their old town hall facility or something into some, some housing, workforce housing for the guards. Where I was talking to Killable Hills, they got some information from me. They're trying to do a housing stipend because they're the only local lifeguard agency between, you know, us, Killable Hills, Kitty Hawk, Duck, and Corolla doesn't have some sort of housing. We currently do not right now, but hopefully by twenty twenty-six we will. So they were looking to do some sort of housing stipend, and I sent them the information that we used to, what we used to provide for a housing stipend, uh, when we did so, so.
Who's your biggest recruiter against you?
It's, uh, it's all pretty competitive amongst the agencies. Right now, I mean, Corolla, Duck, Killable Hills, and ourselves, we're all pretty similar in size and trying to recruit similar-sized staff. So we, a lot of the staff that applies with me also applies with some of these other towns as well. Kitty Hawk is fairly small organization, smallest of any of them here locally. So, um, I would say, you know, those other three organizations are all pretty competitive with us, and, and so, yeah.
Do you lose a lot to Wrightsville? You mentioned them, that's the reason.
I did mention them just because they're in our state and I was contacted with them, by them in the last month. I wouldn't say I lose a lot. They, they have a pretty, um, with Wilmington being right there, they recruit a lot out of the Wilmington area. And so they have a lot of college-aged kids that, uh, you know, they pay for a place to live down there year-round, and so they'll, they, they can kind of, Carolina Beach, Wrightsville Beach, kind of recruit out of Wilmington area, yeah.
I would guess unless the pay disparity was really large, those kids are probably making a geographic choice.
Yes.
They want to be up on the Outer Banks or somewhere else, you know?
The housing's gonna make the biggest difference.
Yes.
You know, and a little bit familiar with this, not as much as Chad, but last year, you know, we had a house that had been used by lifeguards for a long time that became unavailable. And those, those folks were scrambling to find something, and so it's just, the problem's becoming more acute. And I feel like if we had housing and we could recruit based on that, it kind of becomes a no-brainer, I mean.
It does, yeah. I mean, it's a, it's a big piece of the puzzle. It's one of the first questions I get asked by recruits is about housing, so.
Those guards that were here in Naggs Head ended up living in Duck last summer, and that was definitely not where they wanted to be.
Any other questions for Chad? You may be wondering the same thing I'm wondering is, just going to twenty.
Told you that earlier.
You know.
I wouldn't be opposed to it.
Otherwise, otherwise I feel like we're gonna be here next summer in the middle of the budget year doing the same thing again.
Been here the last two years.
And making a budget amendment and, you, you know. Okay.
Is that a motion?
It was not, but I can make, I will make the motion that we, um, that we make the adjustment to twenty dollars instead of nineteen fifty. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, thank you. And we also need to address, well, now the budget amendment is no good, is it?
Ask Amy, can we just bring back the budget amendment for the next meeting?
We can just double it, or I can just put it on consent.
Put it on consent for the next meeting. I think that's fine.
Yeah, and then we'll make sure we update the pay plan.
Yes, that too.
Yeah, we need to update the pay plan for the new amount because that will go on down the line. So we can do that at the next meeting on consent as well.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you guys very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chad. Appreciate that, yeah, I know, I, I, I hate to do it stepwise, but I also know that, you know, we, we're in a bit of a war with the adjoining communities. What we're gonna get is a, you know, feedback that, no, why'd you do that? So, um, we're closing in on probably when lunch will be ready, but we can keep going for a little bit. And that would bring us to the items to and from the town attorney.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one thing I wanted to mention to the, to the board. We've, we talked about it just a few minutes ago, but the, um, the legislation that was adopted in twenty twenty-four as part of the Hurricane, uh, Helene Relief Act that limited or took away certain zoning authority from local government. The manager may be reporting on this as well, but as you probably know, there have been a number of efforts at the legislature to try to address that. And the latest thing I've seen was a series of bills that appear to have local effect only, but one would, would apply to Dare County and other counties of the region that would essentially eliminate, uh, the effect of that prior legislation and reinstate the town zoning authority, particularly for those things initiated by the town, and also would narrow back the definition of what constitutes downzoning. So, um, obviously, those are in committee, but, um, those are all things worth staying, paying attention to as the session goes forward.
Andy may have had some additional, uh, conversation correspondence. I did correspond with the week as well on this after reporting that there had been a local bill introduced. And, um, you know, they reported that they were having good negotiations with the leadership. They were hoping for a statewide solution. And I don't remember where I heard this, um, but it seemed that the best bet for timeframe or resolution was probably sometime in the summer.
Yeah.
Given the pace that things move there, I wouldn't think they would be able to vote on something a lot earlier.
It was interesting that what I saw were a series of local acts, because it really, I mean, this is a statewide issue and really can be addressed on a statewide basis. But, um, you know, again, the local act that I've seen would provide exactly what we want, which is essentially going back to where we were before, uh, September twenty twenty-four.
Great, okay. All right, we'll hope for progress then. Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, that brings us, uh, items referred to and presentations from the town manager. We've already seen the, um, the water update. So that brings us to consideration of an amendment on the payment of bills. Amy?
Hi again, and actually, this is good timing because, um, this is about extending the time when we actually cut off water. And today's actually Water Cut Off Day, and we have fifteen, fifteen people that are gonna get their water cut off, which is a lot. Um, yeah, so let me circle back to that for a minute. So what this ordinance proposes is just to, just to change not physically cutting off the water, waiting five days until after the non-payment fee is applied. So we're not proposing any change to the fee schedule or the non-payment fee. Currently, the non-payment fee and the cutoffs would be done in tandem, so they both would be done today at the same time. So when a business or a household doesn't have water, it obviously poses a public health concern, especially if that person, you know, is not there. And it puts us in an awkward position in trying to preserve the public interest as well as following our ordinances when somebody doesn't have water. I'm not gonna say it happens often, but obviously today we have a lot of people. It doesn't happen often, but it has been elevated to Andy and myself enough this past year that we felt like we needed to change the ordinance and bring this to your attention. When water customers get their water cut off, they usually ask to speak to myself or Andy, and they want us to make a concession or compromise to allow them to have their water turned on, and then they want to negotiate a payment, and when they can pay the full, they can't pay the full payment, but they can pay a certain amount, and they can pay it on this day. Usually that extends within a week of, of when they get their water cut off. Now, we want to follow the ordinance, but I also know you can't live without water, and our community needs to have that. So, I wanna, I also want to support our frontline staff that takes the phone calls, that have to, you know, make those tough conversations. And they're also following our ordinances. Yes, bills get sent out, late notices get seconded out, robo-calls, texts, you name it, they all, they, we go above and beyond what anybody else in our community does. Sometimes there is a disconnect between owners and renters and that messaging. So we are just asking to extend the cutoff time for seven days to allow us and the customers have some grace for them to be able to pay, and entreating everybody the same. But I also want to be aligned with the board, staff, us, no matter how much up the chain the customer wants to take it, their water bill will be, their water will be shut off on the day that this ordinance states. This was the best compromise we could come up with. We do a lot of handholding. We go above and beyond. We provide personalized, exceptional, excellent customer service. We pride ourselves on that. That's what our customers deserve. That's what they expect. But we just hope that this change reflects another element of that, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanders? Commissioner Sanders?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to say thank you. Our town is a community, and the idea that we can help with something like this, I think that it's a great idea.
You said you might circle back to the question of the, the number of folks we have currently in this situation. Is there something that's driven that?
I don't know why we have to, uh, the only reason I can think of it isn't, because they, they, they were emailing me. They were like, what do we do? And I said, well, we haven't got that far yet, but I don't know if it's because people aren't at their, a lot of times it's just because people aren't, it's winter, and so people aren't at their house. And unfortunately, they just use, sometimes people just use the cutoff to trigger paying their bill. And so it's probably, if I had to guess, because just people aren't using their water, so they don't probably care. In the summer, it would, you know, probably not be that many, but again, they do the robo-calls and texts the day before. So it's not because of a lack of communication on our end. It's probably just the seasonality of it.
Forgive me for not knowing this, so we turn off the waters, there are fees to turn it back on?
Well, the late, uh, the nonpa, we, we call it a non-payment fee. It's fifty dollars. So we don't charge to cut it back on, but the fifty dollars is sort of, you know, the non-payment fee. And I mean, we have to have some sort of, something for them to pay their bill. So that's, this balance is, is so delicate, and I don't, it, it puts us in an awkward position to go against the ordinance, but acknowledge that, you know, we. acknowledge that, you know, we, we are, we need, we need water, so.
Right.
We don't charge to, and we also don't charge, um, to turn it on and off. Just if you want us to come to your house to turn your water off, um, maybe because it's winter, um, we don't charge for that.
Good. Alright.
Yeah, we'll say a pipe burst at the house next to Tortugas, and we called the town and they came right out there and cut it off.
Yeah.
Within like ten minutes.
Okay. Alright, then, um, at this point, perhaps a motion to approve the amendment would be in order.
I'll make that motion to approve the amendment as presented.
Is there a second? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Appreciate that. Uh, that brings us to an update on the construction of the public services facility. David?
Good afternoon. Um, up here on the screen, we have the exhibit that we have, uh, been referencing during the entirety of the project, which depicts the progress that has been made on a month-to-month basis. Uh, we've got it color-coded. Uh, blue means that the building construction is complete. Uh, orange means that the site work is complete in those areas. And green, um, represents those areas that are nearing completion. Um, as you can see, uh, from the exhibit that I have on the screen, we've just got a very small area that is left uh, as, from the site work side of things. Um, and that's located here in the, the central portion of the site. Um, that is the area for the wash bay and then the, um, concrete that is right in front of it. Um, the washout building, um, that is currently under construction and is nearing the stage of, of completion. Um, January has been a really cold month. Uh, the, the progress was delayed somewhat by the snow. Um, but the contractors have been on-site just about every day, um, to, to try to go ahead and get this project complete. Um, I'll just show you some, some slides of some of the recent progress. Um, here's a picture of the previous pavement, uh, parking area that was recently installed. This is the washout building that's gonna house some of the equipment. Uh, that will include a air compressor as well as a pressure washer that will be used to wash down the sanitation trucks. Uh, there will also be, uh, an electrical panel board, uh, located within. Um, this is just a representation of some of the concrete that was recently poured. And, um, here's, here's another picture taken on the northern drive aisle. Um, you can see over here to your left, uh, we've got the canopy columns. The canopy is yet to be installed. And we have our rinse arch as well for one of our washdown stations. Um, and that's shown right here. So we've got the framework up. It's just, uh, what remains is uh, some of that water line to be able to go ahead and complete, uh, the installation of that facility. And in addition to that, um, we also have, uh, paving that we have scheduled along Pond Avenue and Lark Avenue. Uh, that was tentatively scheduled for the beginning of this week, uh, but that's been put off until tomorrow, weather permitting, so. There's still a lot of activity that is occurring up in that area. So, um, as we, uh, as, as we look forward, um, you know, from the site work side of things, we're just about complete. Uh, there's some, there's some finished crating to be done. There are some connections to some of the, uh, equipment. Um, we also have some fencing that's being replaced, uh, the paving that I mentioned and, uh, some other small miscellaneous things like landscaping and other, uh, site work. Uh, but, uh, we, uh, we're moving forward. Um, next month, we anticipate all the site work to be complete, um, you know, barring any type of unseen weather, uh, conditions or any other delays. Um, and then we'll just have some small remaining work, um, that the, uh, that the town will be managing. So I'll be, uh, glad to answer any questions that you have.
No questions. Thank you, David.
You're excited this is coming to an end, David.
Get a little bit of your life back.
Until the next project.
Yes, but there is no shortage of work in the future.
Cop security, right?
Good answer.
Actually, it's not so much, I don't think, related to this project. But while you're here and while Nancy's here, on the week, uh, at times when the drop-off is closed, what's the northernmost cardboard drop-off?
Yeah, it's so terrible.
Okay. So there's no longer one, when the drop-off facility is closed, there's no longer a cardboard drop-off on the north end of town, up there anyway. Okay. I went looking for one this past weekend and, uh, you know, so. Well, yeah, I just wasn't gonna, I mean, you're, you're recycling, so you're spending gas to haul a couple of cardboard boxes from one end of town to the other, which seems a little counterintuitive, you, you know, or counterproductive, uh, at least it's. There was one at, was there one at Doughty Park at one time or no?
I don't think so.
No? Okay.
It, it did say, uh, fold the cardboard.
Okay, but it wasn't a card, okay. Alright, that was all. Just wanted to check that. Thank you, David. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
When we went, when we opened the brush, new bulk, brush and bulk yard, we went from three days to five days a week.
Yep.
Recognizing that we were shutting down the cardboard and dumpster area, which became a problem. I mean, it was a,
Sure.
No, no eyes on it, and, and, and it just became a problem with people dropping off things. And so,
Right.
At least town hall is a little bit more public, publicly viewed area, so.
Yep. Now I just have to check my days. Alright. Andy, that brings us to a review of town legislative priorities.
Alright. Well, I'll try to make this quick. Um, back in December during the mid-month meeting, the board agreed to work with, um, a firm to pursue some of the town's goals with respect to policy and appropriations with the legislature. Um, uh, we, we agreed to sign a contract with Warden Smith to do that. Um, in, in January, our staff sat down with them and went over sort of a laundry list of all the things that we would like to try to accomplish, uh, with help from the legislature, if, if we could have anything we want. And we came up with about a three-page list. They, they complimented us for our thoroughness and how many things we came up with. Um, what they told us is that they, they really wanna keep this to just two page, one page front and back. Um, and then really just getting it down to our top priorities would be four or five things. And so what we included in the packet was basically everything that we, we threw, threw out to them. Um, and so we know we had to cut some things out of here, and we also had to identify what our top priorities are. So what I highlighted, um, were the things that we said were our top priorities. And then in red are the things that we said, well, if we had to cut something from the list, that those would be the things we cut. Now, we wouldn't permanently drop those things off of our list, but over time, you know, if we're successful getting some of the things we asked for, then those items that get dropped off would now move back on the list and so forth. And so in yellow, you know, we have a couple of items related to appropriations requests. And then there's several items related to policy requests. So the, the biggest item for appropriations would be getting some assistance replacing some of our asbestos cement water lines. And that's something that we've been trying to do for years. Uh, the biggest project we've done with respect to that was in the uh, south side of Old Naggs Head Cove. We replaced all those lines to the tune of about two million dollars. And we probably have at least seven or million or more dollars of improvements left, uh, to replace all those, those lines. And so, um, you know, Vista Colony is a neighborhood. The north side of the Cove is a neighborhood. Villa Dunes Drive is a neighborhood. And then several areas in South Naggs Head between the highways. And so we'd really like to ask for assistance with that. I think the, the consultant expressed that, um, this would probably be a, a, an item that, uh, would receive attention. So we wanted to make that a top priority. And obviously, if we get funding for this, then that, that frees up some funding for other things that we, we can, we can do. So that would be great. Um, we just did a town hall campus master plan. You know, we've had some issues with our fire station. We wanna replace the fire station. We've also talked about, once we, uh, rebuild the fire station, we would actually try to build a police station. And this is sort of a long-term goal, but, you know, we, we've identified the public safety infrastructure improvements as a, as an appropriations goal. And then with respect to these policy goals, a lot of this are the, the items that the board's been talking about. The first item is the downzoning legislation. You know, that's a top priority for the town. Uh, there is, uh, several efforts underway to address that as, as the town attorney mentioned. Uh, but we, we would use this opportunity to try to stay on top of that. And, and our preference would be for, to be a statewide um, modification, but, you know, we'll settle for a local bill if that's all we can get. Um, but, you know, we just think there's, there's problematic, that, the law that was adopted is problematic. Um, I, I, it probably could be challenged, but hopefully it doesn't come down to that. Last year, we talked about, uh, changes to state law with respect to the replacement of septic systems. Um, I think that's sort of, sort of still in flux, and so we put that down as a priority to, to work with legislature to try to address those issues. And then finally, one of the things that, uh, we've talked about, and I know the mayor and I talked to the league about this, is, you know, cost of construction, especially for local government, just continues to skyrocket. And it's harder and harder for us to get, uh, construction firms interested in doing town work. And so if, if the legislature could look at some of the, the requirements for, for contracting, that would be fantastic. Obviously, there's thresholds for informal versus formal bidding. Uh, that threshold right now is five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, last time that was reviewed, I mean, five hundred thousand dollars was a lot more than, than it is now. And it's not really a big project anymore. And so, uh, on, once you get into that formal bid threshold, you start introducing a lot of additional requirements that a lot of the folks around here just don't wanna deal with. And so we, we, we see that as a priority. And there's a lot of other things in here. You know, we have items related to some other improvements that we'd like to see, some things that are in our CIP. Um, obviously with respect to beaches, we have, um, requests for, uh, sort of a statewide look at funding. Um, you know, increases to the coastal storm damage mitigation program, which we benefited from. Also looking at the authority to raise revenue for beach projects is something that we would care a lot about. And then also, um, a project, or legislation that would help us get derelict houses off the beach is something that we'd care a lot about. And I know a lot of the other communities around here, including the park service, would care about. I did have a conversation with Dave Halick about that, and he was very pleased to hear that is one of our legislative priorities. Um, and then there's several things in here related to, um, housing for employees. And so, um, with respect to that, you know, I, I won't go through this whole list, but I just wanna get some consensus from the board that this aligns with what you expected to see. And if there's any changes you wanna see, then please let me know. Uh, but barring any, any changes, then we'll proceed with cutting out the red items and submitting this to the lobbyists for, uh, further work.
Well, I have a couple of questions, and one, one I think was probably obvious. If it's, just because it's not a priority or a highlighted item for us, if it's on the list there, um, it may be a priority for another community that is also a client of the same lobbyist. And so, um, you, you know, w- we may get some help indirectly because they know that that's also not our top priority, but it's on our list. And so I would guess that if another client has that as a priority, it'll drag us along, you know, our interest along with that. Um, the other question is if, if something, if, if something broke, like on repealing the, uh, downzoning quickly in the session, do we get to put in another priority?
Well, I mean, you know, uh, we're gonna have an opportunity to meet directly in person with some of our legislators. And, you know, whether it's a trip here locally or also to Raleigh, I expect to be able to do both. And so I think that'll be beneficial uh, to create a, a dialogue. Uh, we might, there might be things on this list that we don't highlight as our top priorities, but that may catch the eye of, of legislators. And so we might see an opportunity there, and, and we're gonna obviously jump on it, but
Sure.
that's, that's the next step, is to really learn, like, what's a hot topic? And have this, have that dialogue and then see where it goes. And, you know, ward members will be invited, you know, to go along. And, and once I learn, you know, once they start setting up some of these meetings, then I'll be communicating with the board on that. And we'll just take it from there.
Okay. Alright. Commissioners, any thoughts on these?
No, it looks great. I had the same question you did, wondering if we can swap things out. Is there checked off? Because I'm hopeful they will be checked off.
No, it looks good. Thank you, Andy.
Yeah, I, I thought, I thought they, they did a good job with this and did a good job of prioritizing, uh, those items.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, well, we will proceed. Thank you.
I see lunch is here. The next item is the update on the fitness center. That might take, we may have some questions and require a little bit of time. So I must suggest we take a break now. Um, and come back to, um, finish the agenda. You might have a problem with that?
You need a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah. Make a motion to recess for lunch.
Okay.
Second?
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Alright. I'm gonna guess we're gonna, probably gonna be between thirty and forty-five minutes. Not, not more than that for the folks who were, who were interested. I don't.
Thank you everyone, the board has returned.
Thank you, everyone. The board has returned to open session and I'll ask Mr. Whitey to report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the board did take action to approve closed session minutes and approved a schedule sealing some and opening others. Other actions were taken, but nothing else needs to be reported at this time.
Thank you very much. That brings us to an update on the Town Fitness Center. Andy?
Okay, I just wanted to go over this real quick with the board, just to let the board know where we're at. So, in our budget this current year, we worked on a master plan for the Town Hall campus. And part of this was looking at replacing the fitness center that the town has held for a long time. Originally, we were in a building just over here that is now non-habitable. We moved the fitness center to the 105 C Chase property, the former bank building temporarily, just to house it until we could find another alternative. So, we included a project in the CIP to replace it. The campus master plan looked at different alternatives for doing that. Board discussed this at the retreat and agreed that we would pursue something, but we would also want to look at potential second story of the building that could also be used for lifeguard housing at some point in the future. So, we've been working with the architect on trying to figure this out and trying to understand the staff's needs for this fitness facility. So, we've met several times with a core team of staff and the architect and David Ryan to sort of figure out what the town wants to construct. And so, I just want to say real quick, thanks to Skylah Lamberto Egan with the Fire Department, Seth Gray with the Water Department, Ben Jadeoff with Police, Trey Simmons with Fire, Brandon Stallings with Fire, Vicki Wright with Administrative Services, Christian Aguirre with Police, Shane Height with Fire, Perry, everybody knows Perry, Chad Moats and David Ryan, who all helped us come up with a preliminary layout for this fitness facility. And they've sort of all blessed it at this point, and we sent it out to our whole town staff so they could at least see it and understand what the town is thinking. And I haven't really received any questions about it. And so, at this point, we're ready to proceed to phase two of this process, which involves developing a site plan and a set of building plans. And I just wanted to get the board's consensus on moving forward before we go through that effort. And so, in your packet, we just showed you a basic layout of this building, and it's really... You know, this was the basic layout that I think David Ryan put together. And it really is just one big room. It's a forty by eighty building. And you've got a separate cardio room and some bathrooms, and a very simple layout. And then, the architect who put together this sketch here was just sort of a blank copy of it. Beyond that, you know, the architect has come up with some renderings of what it might look like. This is a two-story version of the building. The board talked about the second story being unfinished initially, and that we could come back later and finish it off. There is a west side view of the building. Now, this is still in progress, so this may not be exactly what it looks like, but this is just an initial rendering based on the sketch. And the building would actually be placed... Let's see. Building would be placed kind of in this area. You can see that there's the Town Hall and the circular drive in front of Town Hall. Just on the opposite side of the drive aisles is kind of where we're talking about placing this building. And it would straddle the landscaping and the parking that's there. And then, this parking and drive aisle would shift over and some additional parking would be created. And we would leave the Public Works Garage. We would take down the old fitness building, and we would move the police impound yard to this where the old fitness building was. And so, just one more thing I wanted to show you real quick. So, the upstairs of the building, they sort of laid out two apartments. They're each four bedrooms. And that's very similar to what we're building over by the Community Care Clinic for the lifeguards. We're building two four-bedroom units there to house up to sixteen lifeguards. And essentially, we could do the same thing here. So, this would really serve multiple purposes. It would replace the town's fitness facility plus provide housing for lifeguards in the future. Given where we're at with this right now and the schedule, we budgeted for this project for this current year. However, we may not be at a position to begin construction until probably July one. And if that's the case, what we'll probably do is come back and rebudget this in next year's budget. And one of the things that the board can consider is whether we wanted to leave the second floor unfinished or whether we wanted to go ahead and do the whole thing now. And so, I think that's something we could continue to work on the design with the architect and kind of look at it both ways and cost it out. And then, as part of the budget process, the board could decide whether they wanted to go forward with the whole thing or leave the second story unfinished. And so, we'll keep working on the design. I just wanted to get some general feedback from the board. If we're headed in the right direction, do you want us to go forward to the next phase of design? And if so, the next step you'll see would be a site plan that would come forward to the board, probably in the April timeframe. And that may be Planning Board, April, May would be Board of Commissioners timeframe, I think. And that's it.
Looks great. So far, so good.
Mr. Sears.
I'm excited about it.
Does anybody else use the fitness facility?
She's in there. She was there yesterday.
I love it. I think it looks awesome. I'm excited to see David take on another project.
And we'll give you more updates on this as we get a little bit more into the details of the design. And you'll see a site plan.
Thank you, Andy. Appreciate that. That brings us to the Board of Commissioners' agenda, and I'll start on my left with Commissioner Lambert. Do you have anything this morning? Mr. Sears.
I do want to bring up... I don't know how to approach it honestly, but the bicycle safety issue, and it was brought out at at a wake I was attending not long ago, and it's been brought up before. And then, yesterday, I was crossing Eighth Street on 158, and I watched a lady in an electric bicycle attempt to cross with the light at the same time on the bike, and she barely got going, and she almost ran into a car, which almost caused a rear-end collision going through that intersection. So, at the next Tourism Board meeting, since they did help fund all these sidewalks that are creating this wonderful interaction between the town, I'm going to reach out to them as well. But I think we need to look at the safety issue of that, especially with these electric bikes becoming more and more popular.
You know, I spoke with Gary Ferguson's sister at that event, and there was some discussion about the possibility of a sort of bicycle safety initiative. And I agree with that. I mean, as a frequent cyclist, a person who gets around a lot on a bike, it's...
It was pretty ugly yesterday.
It wouldn't have been pretty. She didn't have anything in her hands, but she was elderly attempting to ride that bike across the street. It wasn't pretty.
So, you know, there's an educational component to it. There's also... There may be some infrastructure. I'm not sure whether there's infrastructure or not, but it's...
At least signage.
Signage, I think. I mean, we have... I'm always struck, you know, because, you know, I'll ride from my house in Exit Acres to my office on Wood Hill. The way I do that is to cross at the Y and go uprightsful and cross back over at the Y just because it helps me avoid traffic interactions at driveways on 158 and crossing some other busy streets and that sort of thing. And so, I'm always alarmed when I see a cyclist who's on a route when I know there's a safe alternative. And is it signage? Is it maps? Is it an app? What is it that can get some of these folks into these safe places?
A few years back, it was European Day One students that we were concerned with. And they actually... There was one riding up 158 in Kedley Hills the other day in the southbound lane going north. And, you know, they do that in Europe.
Yes, I know.
But it's not safe.
And there was a safe alternative.
Oh, there was a sidewalk there.
Well, there's a sidewalk there. Well, just go a block over too.
Yeah, that would have been really safe.
Yeah. So, I think there are, I think there are some things that we could do.
I have a friend that has a saying for that, but we won't get into it.
I think there's some things we could do, and I think, you know, whether it's, you know... And there is the, isn't there the Bicycle Safety Task Force at the county level? But I'm not sure that they've done much lately. So, I agree. And I'm willing to serve. If you take it to them and we find out there's something afoot, we...
Well, they have the funds to do it, and I think it's an initiative they need to fund.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Anything today? Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, all right. That brings us to the mayor's agenda and an update on the appointment process. And it's not really so much an update, is that we intend to enter into this process of nominating and hopefully electing someone to fill this unexpired position. I do want to... So, I have some framing comments, and then we'll... And I want to, you know, lean on John a little bit because I want to stay on the straight and narrow here. But I want to thank all of those who applied. They are Mark Baylog, Bill Bell, Basil Belches, trying to do this in alphabetical order, Marvin DeMers, David Elder, Thomas Hine, John Kenny, Don Milbraith, Stephanie Morgan, David Roberts, Keith Sawyer, David Thompson, Megan Vaughn, and Travis Zikfus. I want to thank all of those people for expressing their interest in being of service to the town and for providing their information. So, where we are in terms of vacancies, and John, I'm pretty sure I'm reading the current statute. "A vacancy that occurs in an elective office of a city shall be filled by appointment of the city council. If the term of the office expires immediately following the next regular city election or if the next regular city election will be held within ninety days after the vacancy occurs, the person appointed to fill the vacancy shall serve the remainder of the unexpired term. Otherwise, the successor shall be elected at the next regularly scheduled city election that is held more than ninety days after the vacancy occurs. And the person appointed to fill the vacancy shall serve only until the elected successor takes office. The elected successor shall then serve the remainder of the unexpired term." That is the circumstance that we are in. We will be appointing somebody until the next election, which is the fall of this year. "If the number of vacancies on the council is such that a quorum of the council cannot be obtained, the mayor shall appoint enough members to make up a quorum, and the council shall then proceed to fill the remaining vacancies. If the number of vacancies on the council is such that a quorum of the council cannot be obtained and the office of the mayor is vacant, the governor may fill the vacancies upon the request of any remaining member of the council, etc. Vacancies in appointive offices shall be filled by the same authority that makes the initial appointment. This section shall not apply to vacancies in cities that have not held a city election, levied any taxes, or engaged any municipal function." So, this board is the party charged to fill the vacancy, and we do not have political parties in our offices. So, that part of the process that you may see in some places does not apply. So, John has advised me that it would be appropriate for the board to vote on the procedure that we are using this morning first, before we proceed to nominations. And so, what I have been saying that we were going to do and have written to citizens that we were going to do was that we would open the process. We would place a name and nomination. We would vote on that name. That it will take three, two-two votes fail. It will take at least three affirmative votes in order to elect someone to this position. And that until we get three affirmative votes, we will continue to nominate and to vote until we have someone with three votes. And John has made an additional point, which I had not considered, but that is that a name may be placed into nomination a second time because if we get several rounds into this and someone wants to go back to an earlier candidate, then someone who perhaps had had a two-two vote and someone wants to go back to that person, they can be nominated a second time, assuming then there may be a change in the feeling and the disposition to vote. So, with that, I offer that as the procedure.
I'll make a motion to accept that as the procedure?
To use the nomination and second and then vote process? Is that what you're talking about?
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, thank you. In that case, having done that, I will open the floor to the first nomination.
I'll nominate David Thompson.
All right, I have a motion to nominate David Thompson. Is there a second? I will second that for the purpose of getting a candidate going. And so, we have a motion and seconded in favor of David Thompson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Nay.
Nay, all right. So, that's two-two, and that fails. Open it to the second nomination.
I would like to make a nomination for Megan Vaughn. But first, I also want to thank all of the applicants. The town had fourteen very worthy applicants, and I want to be transparent with both the applicants as well as the rest of our community why I am making the nomination. Megan has been serving the town since 2002, as far as I can see, on various working groups as well as committees. She also serves as, serves on our planning board, a role that she has held for the past seven years. She also serves as our planning board chair. What's really impressive about that to me is when you serve as planning board chair... When you're appointed to serve on the planning board, you're appointed to serve on the planning board. But when you serve as a planning board chair or the vice chair, you're elected by your fellow board members. And Megan has been elected unanimously to serve as planning board chair for the last six years. And that demonstrates that she has earned the respect and the trust of her board to lead the planning board as chair. Megan has a proven track record of working towards our town vision, and that track record is imperative. It's essential when we're considering who to appoint for this seat. For those reasons, I would like to nominate Megan Vaughn.
Thank you. I have a motion. Is there a second?
I will second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second to nominate Megan Vaughn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay, all right, that's two-two. Open the floor to the third nomination.
I'll make a nomination and vote for Basil Belches.
Basil.
Basil. We understand Mr. Belches.
Thank you. I have a nomination for Basil Belches. Is there a second? I will second that. So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of electing Mr. Belches signify by saying aye.
Aye. I mean, nay, sorry.
All right, so I have two ayes and all opposed say nay.
Nay.
My bad, sorry, nay.
Okay, that's two-two. That also fails. Does the board wish to continue, or does the board wish to rest this for a month and come back to this?
I will make one more nomination for Megan Vaughn, just because of giving her a track record. And, I mean, they are all great candidates. They are all friends of mine. I know David's here. He's a good friend of mine. Basil is as well, but, I mean, it's a difficult process. And I just think, you know, she has been chairman of the planning board for six years, six or seven years. And I just, you know, I think she's the most qualified, so I'm going to try for her one more time. So, I will make that motion.
All right, thank you. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for Ms. Vaughn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay, all right. So, we're deadlocked at two-two. I'll ask the board again. Do you wish to continue today, or do you want to regroup?
Make a motion to regroup.
Okay.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to regroup. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you. Is there any other business to come before the board today?
We just have the workshop session.
Okay. All right, then a motion to recess to the fiscal year 2526 Water Rates Workshop would be a little.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. See, John, thank you.
You good?
We're good.
Okay, we'll go ahead and begin the workshop dealing with our water rates. I'll let Amy Miller come up and introduce our guests today. She's been working with our consultant, Raph Talis, on analyzing our water rates as part of our budget this year. We agreed to do a rate study, we got a grant for this, and we're also doing a water system master plan. Those items are sort of tied together, and we intend on adopting new water rates as part of next year's budget, and so this is a chance for the board to understand the direction this is headed and also to sort of provide some philosophical input on how our rate should be structured. And so with that, Amy.
Hey, good morning, or good afternoon. Hi Bart and Ford, they're from Raph Talis, who is one of the premier consulting firms when it comes to, you know, figuring out utility rates and things like that. So like Andy had said, this, they were, they partnered with WK Dixon when we RFQ'd our water infrastructure, or asset inventory assessment grant that we received. So they, this was RFQ'd with WK Dixon as part of that. And we are in the final stages of getting the water master plan together, and of course, part of that is the CIP, which is, is why they brought them along. We're still working through some things, including, you know, perhaps looking at the lobbyists helping with some of the water items. But when we kind of started having this discussion, we've been working them a lot, it was really interesting, and like Andy said, it's more, very philosophical on how to set rates. Yes, of course, it's going to be tied to how much revenue you generate, but how you do that can be in several different ways, including, you know, conservation and tying a cost to the customer, making sure everybody's sort of paying their fair share. So we thought it would be helpful, rather than just presenting some different rate scenarios to you, to kind of go through that thought process, to make sure that we were aligned on, you know, what those rates might be and what that might look like. So with that being said, we're very thankful to partner with Raph Talis. They've been great to work with and super responsive and very flexible, because we did cancel the January workshop with them. So with that being said, I guess I could pass the floor to them and welcome them to the Town and Max Head.
Great, thank you so much, Amy. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Wonderful, thank you for the introduction, and really appreciate you giving us a little bit of time to visit with you today. Again, I'm Bart Krupf with Raph Talis and with these board majority. We are going to walk through some material. Ford, do you mind sharing your screen? Let's see if this will come through. As Amy said, you know, kind of the work that we're doing, you know, for the town is sort of multifaceted, but you know, our emphasis is on the financial side of things and looking at kind of both the financial plan, you know, for the water system as well as the design of the rates. You can go to the next slide, Ford. And so the agenda we kind of wanted to walk through, I'm just going to spend a little bit of time on the front end, just giving you kind of a higher level overview of kind of what we're doing. And then what, the meat of really what we want to be able to kind of get from you is really kind of solicit some feedback on what we call pricing objectives, because when it comes to the structure of your rates, not every utility has to have the same rate structure. Rates have to be reasonable, they don't have to be exact, we just can't be arbitrary or capricious in how we set our rates. So we have some flexibility to kind of operate in between, you know, certain lanes, and so it's our job to make sure we stay within those lanes, but we do have some flexibility in terms of how we structure the rates. So I want to talk to you a little bit about what your objectives are, and then want to show you some potential concept designs around the structure of the rates, which will then kind of get some feedback from y'all, and then we'll come back next time when we have sort of all the pieces, which would be kind of the financial planning piece, which sort of looks at how much revenue we need, plus some options on the structure of the rates if we want to change the structure, and then we can kind of package everything together. So with that, I'm going to kind of go through the front end stuff relatively quickly, because I know we kind of started a little bit later, so I really want to get to the, kind of the rate structuring component. But just at a high level more broadly, we generally follow basically a five-step process, you know, in our studies. The first step is kind of what we're going to spend a little bit of time on today, which is understanding what your, kind of your objectives are in terms of how you price your services. The second step, which is something that's been ongoing, really kind of gets into the financial planning elements, you know, looking at your revenues and your costs and your capital improvement plan and how you're going to finance that. And I'm going to touch on that just really briefly, but that's not really the focus today. The third and fourth steps kind of really get into the cost of service component. So what we do is we look at the costs, we allocate the costs to different types of customers, like residential, commercial, et cetera, and make sort of compare that to how you're currently recovering costs, is to make sure that we're not, you know, too far out of line. The fourth step gets to the, the design of the rate structure, so that's exactly the structure of how you price your services, and we'll walk through kind of what you currently do, and then maybe some options for consideration. The fifth step is just recognize that this is kind of an iterative process, so again, while we're collaborating with you, looking at options and trying to have it in our recommendation. You got the next one, Ford. So again, big picture, financial plan. So we're not going to get into the weeds of this today, but just so you know, you know, we have developed a financial planning model, you know, for the town, looking at the water system, that gets into basically laying out a projection of our revenues and our costs out over time. And then a key piece of this relates to the capital improvement plan, which is something WK Dixon is working on in terms of the, the capital projects that we need to do, and then, you know, we're looking at the sort of financing side of that, how we finance those projects, and what does that mean in terms of the revenues that we need to be able to support the system and make sure we stay strong and viable financially. So that gets into a number of elements, but that is a component we are looking at, we'll be back and talk about that next time. Go to the next one, Ford. I do want to just touch a little bit on, you know, one of the big drivers in the financial plan, because I do think it's important, you know, and obviously we all know, we've seen, certainly not as much recently, but in the last several years, accelerated inflation, you know, just more generally, but particularly in the utility space. So I thought this graphic was interesting, I'd actually pulled this together on another presentation, but I think it's particularly relevant. And what this graph shows is, so the, the blue line, kind of the light blue line, represents the consumer price index, which is a kind of a proxy for inflation at the retail level. The darker blue line represents the producer price index, which is just a proxy for inflation more at the wholesale level. And the green line represents effectively an indices for the water sector specifically. And so what you can kind of really tell is that generally, even over the last fifteen years, you know, inflation in the water sector because of commodity-intensive nature of the business, you know, capital-intensive nature of the business, has really outpaced general inflation, and it's really accelerated, started to accelerate when we saw inflation really rear up, you know, around twenty-one, twenty-two, and it's really continued higher. And again, just because inflation has, has normalized, that's just the rate of change, doesn't mean that pricing has dropped. So again, this will be a backdrop that we'll touch on more when we kind of get into the financial planning elements, but let's go to the next slide, Ford. What we really want to talk about today relates more to that kind of first step and then the rate structure. And I had mentioned that when it comes to designing a rate structure, not every utility has to have the same structure. You can kind of design it to sort of align with what your objectives are. So what does that mean? Well, you know, Amy kind of alluded to it a little bit in her introduction, you know, certain objectives may be things like conservation could be really important to you, and you want to design your, your rate structure such that you would promote conservation. Other objectives might be things like financial sufficiency. We just want to make sure that our rates cover our costs and that we're prudent in that, we make sure that we're managing that over time. That can be an important objective. Other things you can think about, you know, customer understanding, you know, we can have a really complicated rate structure potentially, that might be super fair and equitable, but the customers can't understand it, so sometimes utilities would like to have a more simple type of structure. You know, other things that, that sort of jump out, and that might be particularly relevant here, would be things like revenue stability. So revenue stability kind of gets into kind of the fixed versus variable component of our rate structure, and you know, utilities that really want to make sure they have more consistent revenues will have larger fixed charges and maybe lower variable charges, and other utilities might have the opposite, but you know, higher fixed charges provide good revenue stability. One other that I'll kind of tease out in this list is kind of the first left on cost of service-based allocation. So, you know, we did do a cost of service study that I'll kind of show you the results of in a second. You know, some utilities, again, want to, if you do a study like that, they want to make sure that you're covering costs, you know, consistent with the results of the cost of service. But cost of service can be very broad, too. It, it's, in the public world of rate setting, again, the rates just have to be reasonable, they don't just have to be exact, but you know, some utilities might want to be really precise, and this is sort of contrary to what I was talking about with customer understanding, where you might have a more detailed structure possibly. So in the end, there's a lot of different ways that you can sort of go with this, as long as we stay within the lanes of reasonableness. So as we kind of go through the presentation today, I want you to be thinking about that a little bit in terms of what sort of is important to you and kind of the unique characteristics of the Town and Max Head system, which are somewhat unique. You know, it is a seasonal community, you have a large influx of customers that, you know, come during the summer months, but from a cost standpoint, your costs don't change as much all year round because a lot of the costs are fixed. So it's a, you know, kind of a different type of system than compared to a system that doesn't have that seasonality factor. So again, just some things to think about. You got the next slide, Ford. And so one important aspect of, of pricing objectives, though, is that, you know, we kind of showed a bunch of different objectives up there, and there may be others that, you know, to think of. But what we're trying to do in this process is, is sort of get some feedback from you and prioritize what's most important to us, because a rate structure can't do everything. It's sort of a balancing act, and some of these things, they do kind of compete with one another. So, you know, for example, you told me that, gosh, conservation is, is super important, and that would lead us to more variability or volume-based rate structures that really kind of promote and send a pricing signal for conservation. That could be great, but that could also kind of compete a little bit with if you also want to have really stable revenues, which might need you, would suggest you have larger fixed charges. So there's a balancing act, and you kind of try to find the sweet spot, but you can't necessarily do everything, so we want to sort of hear what's, what's most important, and that helps inform that the rate is on pace. You can go to the next slide, Ford. So I want to talk a little bit about the cost of service study and kind of what we did. Now, the cost of service study is a, is a really detailed look at the system, and this is a kind of a scary schematic, but really all it is at the end of the day, when you think about cost of service, is you're basically looking at the system, and you're allocating the system into kind of different functions based on the way that it operates. You know, in this case, we're, we're buying our water from Deer County, so there's a supply component there, but we're distributing water, we're pumping it, we're storing it, et cetera, so we're kind of compartmentalizing costs in that way. And the reason we do that is that we can then look at our different types of customers and our customer classes and how they use the system from both a sort of average use concept and a peak use concept. And then we can use that information to sort of drive the cost down into allocating them into both fixed components and variable components, and ultimately to different customer classes. So right now, with our rate structure, which we'll show you in a second, we don't charge by different customer classes, everyone's kind of under the same umbrella rate structure, but some utilities do, but we do track that information in a billing system, so when you do a cost of service, what you're kind of doing, said another way, is you think of like all your costs as a pie, and then if you look at your different customer classes, they're each paying for a share of that pie. So we look at what they're doing now, Oliver, is what the cost of service is telling us in terms of how those customers are causing us to incur costs, and we sort of see the difference. And again, the fact that it might be off a little bit can be okay, again, the test is reasonable, but what it can do is it can help, it can help inform some concepts when we look at the structure as to why that might be the case, and that's what we want to talk about today a little bit. So you go to the next slide. This is that pie, as I described it, so on kind of the left side of this chart represents the current breakdown of how we're recovering our costs by some sort of major types of customer categories, and we kind of group things as residential, which is obviously the largest, it's a predominantly residential system. And a non-residential slash commercial, so that was basically our commercial customer seat, the residential's the dark blue, the non-residential slash commercial is, is a lighter blue, and then we've kind of teased out a couple of the non-residential customers as well. We kind of highlight hospitals and schools. And on the right side of the chart represents kind of the results of the cost of service. So in going through those permutations and looking at the system and looking at the demand characteristics, what it tells us is that, on a whole, residential customers aren't quite recovering their cost of service, whereas sort of the non-residential class is, to a little bit of an extent, subsidizing them. It's not to a huge extent, but it's a little bit to, to an extent. And so kind of what are the reasons why that might be the case? And really, kind of what we found is sort of two primary reasons. You know, one, when you look at how the residential class peaks the system, because you have to design a system to meet peak demand, when there's a lot of people here in the summer, there's a higher peak on the system for that class as a whole. And so again, when you do a cost of service, customer classes that peak more kind of take a greater share of those peaking-related costs. So that's sort of one reason why residential gets a little bit more in the cost of service. The, the other reason we think largely relates to just how the rate structure is designed and the fact that we don't have customer classes. Right now, we have kind of tiers that the customers flow through, and some of the, the non-residential customers that just effectively use more water get into those higher tiers a little bit more so than the residential customer class does as a whole. So it's sort of a combination of those two things. And I think that might get illustrated a little bit better if we look at, I think the left side of the current structure, isn't it? And I think that might get illustrated a little bit better if we look at, I think the left side is the current structure. Yeah, so kind of getting into the the considerations on the rate structure. So this is sort of what the media wanted, what we wanted to get into today. So I can't see everyone really closely and I'm going to assume that you might have some familiarity with the current structure, but but maybe haven't looked at it in in too much detail. So let me kind of walk you through how we currently charge our customers. So you look on the right side of this this chart. We currently have a structure that includes at kind of the highest level, a minimum charge, which is a fixed charge. And that escalates by meter size. And that minimum charge includes an allowance of 3,000 gallons of consumption over a two month period. So there's a minimum allowance component in that minimum charge. And so regardless of what volume a customer has on a monthly basis, they're going to pay the amount. And then if you look at the volumetric rates, what you have now is what we call an inclining block volumetric rate structure. So there's currently effectively six tiers to it. And what happens is you can see on the right hand side, the unit cost. So like in tier two, for example, is $7.80 and this is per 1,000 gallon usage. For a usage that occurs between 3,000 and 15,000 gallons over a two month period, that usage is charged $7.80 per thousand gallons. When you trip over 15,000 gallons between 15 and 40, the unit price goes up to 8.76. Forty to 75, it goes to 9.32 and so forth. So it's basically called an inclining block volumetric structure. So that's kind of the way that we currently charge. So what works about the current structure? And if there's any questions, I apologize, please feel free to chime in at any point. So what are some of the benefits of the current structure? Well, you know, one of the benefits would be that that minimum charge definitely provides for some revenue stability because it is a fixed charge. That's a benefit. The volumetric rates, the way they're set up, they are an inclining block structure. So you have seasonal seasonal use that's higher in the summer because there's a lot of people here, particularly in the residential side. You do shift some more of that cost burden to those higher volume users, which makes sense and has some logic to it, particularly for residential customers. The downside of that potentially is there that some non-residential customers that might just use more that are here year round can also get into those higher tiers as well. So that's sort of the, you know, one of the downsides of that. We don't have customer classes per se. So when we looked at the the structure, you know, one of the things we we thought about is, you know, is it an unreasonable structure? No, you could continue doing and billing it this way. But if you have the opportunity to make some improvements to it, you know, what could you do to improve it? And so we've got some sort of concepts around that that we wanted to to kind of bounce off of you. Some things that we've kind of thought about and kind of working with staff. And again, we're going to talk about this more conceptually than show you any numbers, but I, you know, want to get some feedback on those options. So there's sort of five conceptual designs that we're thinking of and I'll step through each one. The first is to increase the current minimum allowance. So that would be just kind of looking at that current structure. It's a 3,000 gallon minimum allowance and we potentially can increase that. And I'll talk about the pros and cons of each of these. That's one option. The second option we're thinking about is potentially moving away from a minimum charge entirely and putting in what we call more of a true base charge. So base charge basically doesn't have, it's a fixed charge, but doesn't have a minimum allowance to it. And it's just really functions as a pure clean base charge. That's another option we'll talk about pros and cons of. Third option is looking at some of the tiers that we have and the usage thresholds and those current blocks that we kind of showed you went through and maybe potentially adjusting those and or doing some other things with that to make make them a little bit more effective and a little bit more aligned with the cost of service. Go through that. The fourth concept that we're thinking about is potentially looking at establishing class based rates. So again, right now, we don't have customer classes. Everybody falls under that same umbrella. But my move look at maybe establishing different customer classes and what are the pros and cons of doing that? And then the last one that we're thinking about is potentially, this would be kind of the biggest overhaul, would be just kind of getting away from the incline block tiering concept and moving more to what we call a seasonal rate structure, which is something we see fairly often in communities like Nagshead that are seasonal in nature. And so we kind of more of an on-peak, off-peak or on-season, off-season concept of the structure. Okay. And before I kind of step through, one important distinction is these aren't all mutually exclusive. Like it's possible that we can do some combinations of this. So what I want to get feedback on is what might resonate with you all in terms of, you know, giving us a little bit more focus on what we want to model. Okay. So let me walk through each one in a little bit more detail so it provides some more context where you then we'll talk about them. And that that will be the last slide I get to then we can talk about them. So why don't we go to the first one? So this is probably, you know, could be a relatively minor change to the structure. But again, as I mentioned, the current minimum charge has an allowance of 3,000 gallons a month. Basically, when we looked at the billing data, that covers roughly about a third of the bills kind of fall under that amount. So if we were to, for example, increase that to 4,000 gallons or maybe it covers a higher percentage of those bills, that would be a relatively small change, but what would it do? Well, if we then effectively, let's just say we increased it by 1,000 and charged for that, so that just kind of gets included in the minimum, that would increase the revenue stability a little bit. And the concept around having revenue stability is the fact that we have to provide service 24/7, 365, all year round. And it doesn't matter honestly, you know, probably 90% of our costs, well, just say we are buying water, so there's a little bit of variability. But a lot of our costs are fixed. A lot of the infrastructure costs are fixed. A lot of staffing costs are fixed. So having a fixed charge and having revenue stability is pretty common in a seasonal community like this because your bills, you know, don't really change year round, even though your volume changes quite a bit. So increasing revenues really might be something that would be of value. The challenges with this though would be that minimum charges in and of themselves, and we've been doing rates for 30 plus years. I've been doing them personally for north of 20 years. Minimum charges sometimes are tough for customers to understand because there's customers that use less than the minimum and they don't understand why they're paying for it. Well, you know, the reason why they are relates to this fixed cost I just talked about. But the optics of minimum charges can be trickier. So it's not as much of a direct link to kind of the fixed cost and the charge as what a pure base charge is. And I'm going to talk about that next. That's kind of a challenge with it. Another challenge would be if we were to increase the minimum allowance and then kind of adjust the the minimum charge for that. You know, all the customers that effectively use up to the current minimum would pay for additional usage effectively. So it would impact them to to some extent, all things being equal. So that's potentially something to kind of chew on now. Why don't we talk about the next one? Okay, so another concept, you know, I mentioned before is kind of going to a pure base charge. So this is what a lot of our clients do have where they don't really have an allowance built into their fixed charge. It's just a pure base charge. The pros of doing something like that would be that it's more kind of a direct link again, like I said, to your fixed cost recovery. There's there's no volume piece included in it. It's just really a fixed charge recovering fixed costs. Same concept around the providing service 24/7, 365. If you were to set the base charge where the current minimum is and you just effectively get rid of the allowance, you're not going to lose any revenue stability compared to what you currently do. That would be a pro. The challenge would be that this in and of itself would impact, you know, customers that are using basically, well, the biggest impact would be a customer using right at the minimum because then they'd be paying for all that usage plus the base charge. But effectively, customers that are right at the minimum would be impacted the most. Customers that use very little, not really impacted as much, but it's those that right at the minimum would see the biggest run of that in terms of having to pay for that additional volume that's sort of baked into their current minimum charge. I think maybe a good way to see that would be to put an example of what that might look like on the next slide. So if you were to do that, so again, your current minimum charge, you know, the $44. So if we were to, right now, that customer gets 3,000 gallons with that total bills, $44. If you go to a true base charge and you set it right at that minimum, then that customer would pay the base charge, but it'd also pay the volumetric rate so that that bill would go up. And that would generate more revenue across the system, but that's the downside of it. It would impact particularly a 3,000 gallon customer right at that minimum the most. So that would be the downside of doing something like this. So it it does a good job at generating additional revenue, but not as good a job of managing kind of the lower volume customer at the minimum. Okay. Why don't we go to the next option? So another thing I think we could think about, this gets more into the volumetric piece, is we have six tiers right now in the current structure. And those tiers have, you know, varying allowances or levels of consumption. And then there's the inclining block structure around it. So there may be an opportunity to kind of use the billing data and try to better align those tiers with the usage patterns of the customer. We think they do an okay job, but there are some challenges with that. So if we look at kind of doing that, it does provide an opportunity to maybe better promote equity across the rate structure. Because as I had mentioned before, the fact that we don't have customer classes means we're trying to sort of squeeze everybody into the same tiering umbrella and not really looking specifically at the class usage characteristics. So, you know, if we were to do this, probably we would want to establish customer classes such that we can be more refined in how we we set those different tiers. Again, to help promote that equity. The other challenge would be though, if we do that, you have made your structure more complicated because right now we don't have any classes. And we would be introducing potentially that concept and that might just make things a little more complicated and, you know, potentially create some additional administrative burden in terms of just, you know, sending out bills and things like that and customer understanding excellence. So we think there are some opportunities here, but it probably would lead to a more complicated structure.
Bart, this is Ben Cohan. Can I ask a question?
Stop and then try to, you know, solicit some reaction from you all. So again, talked about establishing, yes? I'm sorry, was there a question?
I think we have a question.
Sure.
And you may be just getting there, looking at the, looking at the slide. But my question was going to be, given what you know about Nagshead, you keep talking about classes, what would the classes be? And is that where we're getting ready to go?
Is there any way that could be repeated? I'm sorry, it was a little hard for me to hear.
Sure. So in a town like Nagshead, which you're familiar with at this point, what would some classes be? I see some here on the slide, but what, we're using the term classes of customer. We don't have a lot of variation in the commercial customers. So so what would that be? What would that look like?
Yeah, I'm so sorry. It is just breaking up on my end. Is there any way maybe someone else could reframe the question just so?
Can you hear me, Bart?
Just how the microphone's coming through.
This is Amy. Can you hear me? Can you hear me better, Bart?
Yes or no?
I can, can we put it in the chat?
Sure, yeah. And I can hear you loud and clear.
Oh, you can hear me? Oh. His question was what would, what would the classes you suggest be for Nagshead? And is it what you have on that slide, the residential, non-residential and institutional? I guess his question was what, what types of classes would you have? Yeah.
Correct, Mayor?
Yeah, so great question and perfect segue. You know, we, we think that probably not, given the composition of the non-residential customer group, you know, probably the most simplified way to do it would just be to do it more broadly. And maybe just have kind of residential, non-residential with the one caveat. It it could be a possibility to carve out a subset of the non-residential. There's two classes in particular that kind of jumped out at us. Are the sort of the the schools would be one of the classes in that, you know, they tend to use more, so they're kind of getting into those higher tiers, but that's more of a year round customer. And then the hospital as well is another one. So we sort of thought of a institutional class could make some sense in Nagshead just given. So it's sort of a balancing act. I don't think you want to go too far over too many classes. So that was sort of our idea was maybe either just purely residential and non-residential, which would be pretty clean, maybe add a subset of institutional. Did that answer the question?
Yes, thank you for nail.
Yes.
Okay. Great question though. Yes, so that's that would be kind of what we were thinking. And and then just the the last one I think I wanted to get through. One more slide forward. You know, when we first kind of came into the study, it is given, you know, having work, you know, prior experiences in in seasonal communities, seasonal rates obviously came to mind. You know, we do see this quite often for communities such as Nagshead. The the pros of doing, you know, a seasonal rate would be, again, it's sort of, you know, promotes rate equity. Not that you can't get there with other ways, but it does kind of promote rate equity. And probably more so in the way that it kind of aligns with kind of the characteristics of your system being a seasonal system and having such a larger amount of demand in the the seasonal periods and the non-seasonal periods. And so we thought that that certainly might be a possibility you would want to think about. There are some challenges though. You know, on the surface, it seems really easy, but when you peel the onion back on it, there are some challenges. There could be some administrative burdens. So right now, the the way we bill, we have two billing cycles. So again, customers get billed bi-monthly and there's two cycles. So because we have two cycles, we'd have to establish a seasonal period and a non-seasonal period. Because we have two cycles, those periods would be slightly different for the billing cycles. Is that the end of the world? No. But effectively, what you'd be trying to do in the seasonal period is is largely get after usage that occurs, let's just say between May, which is sort of when I think the season sort of picks up in Nagshead, probably carrying through September. But you'd have to sort of align that differently because the challenge is you bill on arrears. And so the two billing cycles creates some complexity. It's not that it couldn't be solved, but that's creates some complexity. And it is a substantial change is another challenge. I mean, this is kind of like reconfiguring your entire structure. The other things I'm talking about with the tiering is more like kind of The other things I'm talking about with the tiering is more like kind of just tweaking in and trying to get at the same concept of pushing more of your cost to the seasonal period, because that's where you have to, that's where all the, the demand and the capacity requirements are. Seasonal rate, rate structure does it in a really kind of elegant way, it's just very different than what you do right now. So it might require a little bit more outreach to the customers. But, again, what I want to note with all these options, I talked about the base charge, we talked about tweaking the minimum allowance, they can be potentially done in combination. And so, you know, what I really wanted to get from you all today, is there anything that I said that kind of resonated with you? And I'm not, again, not suggesting that you have to change your rate structure. Our role is just to provide ideas and then get some feedback, and then when we get some feedback, then we can kind of model some things out and give you a better sense of like, what a customer bill looks like under this way versus that way, which is ultimately what you want to see. But, speaking at just a little bit of a higher level, is there anything that I said in terms of the objectives of the utility of the town and how you price your services, or the concepts around rate structuring that resonated? And so I just want to kind of open up the floor for feedback.
Okay, can you hear me?
That's what's bothering me, but...
Amy, we may need you.
What's that?
Bart, can you hear me? Bart?
Why don't we discuss this and send him an email?
Yeah, I mean, that could be fine, too, if we need to sort of digest this.
You didn't have to leave, Bart.
That's pretty funny, the guy who won't get close to his mic gets through loud and clear.
Y'all are backfeeding through the system.
Bart, can you hear me? Bart?
Do you have his phone number?
Y'all are just backfeeding.
Is that what it is?
He should just say it. Does he speak into the mic?
I think there's a delay.
He heard Mike, though, like, right away.
Can you hear me, Bart? Bart? No.
Do you have his phone number?
I agree with it. Let's, let's discuss, because I have some, I have a bunch of questions, and I don't want to go back and forth with this, with what we have, because I have a lot of questions.
It's impossible, right now.
It's not going to work.
Okay, I think I'm hearing that I'm not coming through on a delay, maybe?
That's going to heat up, gee, right up.
Y'all are there. Where you're speaking.
Bart, I'm calling you.
We're giving you a call, Bart. Answer the phone. It's Andy.
Bart, I'm calling you.
I think, I think this is probably better, there's something wrong with our audio system. But I can just tell you the questions over the phone, and then we can hear you if you respond, so.
All right, well, do you want to go ahead and start with your questions?
I don't want to relay a bunch of questions, I'm with Mike. Let us let them go, and just formulate some questions, and y'all can take it back to them.
Yeah, it's at a 2:30, I think.
Yeah, they got to leave in three minutes anyways, per your conversation.
Okay.
Okay, good reminder.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good. All right, well, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll give you a list of questions, and we'll just get back to you. All right, thank you, all right, bye.
Gotta love it. Yeah, well, I think we can all, I don't, I don't want to have a meeting that could be some emails. Can we, we can certainly differentiate water usage between a year-round, three or four-bedroom on the west side and a rental house. We, and we can, we can tell who's using how much water, and we can do it seasonally and year-round, we can. And the other big question I have is, can, among the way that we vary rates, can we do it geographically in the town?
What would be the benefit of doing it geographically?
Oh, oh, I don't know, I was thinking about, yeah, you know, my first thought was almost like the way we do our tax districts, is, you know, where's the biggest water, you know, where's the biggest residential water usage in the town?
Well, we know who, we know who the biggest water users are, and I think that's why we have a tiered structure now. It's like, as you get up into the higher tiers, then you get charged more per thousand gallons.
Right.
And so, you know, when we've had these conversations just between us and the consultant, you know, one of the things that we keep telling them is in Nagshead, it's like everything else we do, police, fire, you know, we can't staff up seasonally.
Right.
Our costs are fixed, year-round. So if you have a house in Nagshead, we, we have to spend the same amount of money to service your house as we do your next-door neighbor, whether you use a lot of water or not.
Right.
So that kind of argues for having a higher fixed charge, you know, and so right, and right now, our fixed charge, our base rate is, includes up to 3,000 gallons, so if you use 3,000 gallons or less, you just pay that flat fee. And so what we were sort of leaning towards was looking at the base charge and possibly increasing that, but then also increasing the, the amount of gallons you get within that base charge. And what I think that would do is it would sort of subsidize the year-round.
So you're creating a deeper kind of base tier, and then, okay, I mean, that makes, that makes sense.
And the other thing, you know, he shared the one slide with the pie chart, you know, and it looks like the commercial customers are sort of subsidizing the residential customers a little bit. And so, when he saw, talks about classes, you know, you could come up with different classes of customers. And so if you looked at seasonal and then residential, and then sort of tried to increase their rates a little bit, that would reduce the subsidy on the residential customers from the commercial customers. And also, I think, one of those we've talked about is with the institutional customers, not burdening them so much. But I mean, that's a philosophical discussion, but you've got the hospital, the school, the nursing home, and because they use so much water, they're paying, in those higher tiers all the time.
Okay. When you're talking, again, when you're talking about classes of customers, so, we have residential, institutional, which covers a lot of territory, and commercial, is there anything else?
No.
Okay. That's it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's all we're talking about.
Right, and we're not, we're...
One of his models, he's got non-residential use, and if you mix that with something else, then no rental property that's vacant would pay anything, so you would, you'd have to bounce that, so. I mean, I think the goal, he asked us the goal, like, he doesn't know what your goals are, I mean, your goals are to, to pay the county, come up with enough to maintain your water system, right? And a reserve in case something breaks.
Right.
We got Amy, what are we giving him for?
Yeah, we got a sustainable system, basically, overall, and I wouldn't mind encouraging a little conservation, but beyond that, that's, I think that's the goal.
There's a second part to this whole study, you know, I mean, he's looking, he's asking questions about the rate structure. He said in the end, you don't have to change your rate structure at all, you could just leave it the same, but how well does that pay for operating capital costs? And so, another thing we're looking at is what are our capital projects going to be? And then, in order to pay for all of those, how do, how do you have to adjust your rates in order to, and then, what, what they're going to probably eventually suggest is a series of rate increases so that we can fund our CIP.
Right.
And we haven't gotten there yet.
Okay. Do we have a list, though, and have we probably seen a list of your top 10 capital proj, water capital projects?
Most of them, unless he adds... We're coming up with a new list as part of the Water System Master Plan.
Okay.
And we're working on that now.
Okay.
That's a separate project.
Right.
But, you know, we had a meeting about that last week, and we, we think we know what we need to do. You know, there's, there's going to be, need to be some flexibility, I think, that we could look at it on two scenarios. You know, like if, for instance, we get some funding to help pay for our AC line replacements, then the rate structure would be different than if we didn't get funding for that.
Right.
But I think he could come up with scenarios, you know, both ways, you know, but we know what our other projects are going to be. The consultant that's working on the Water System Master Plan initially came up with a pretty hefty list of projects that would probably become unaffordable, and so we're looking at trying to whittle that down to what's realistic, you know, but, I mean, we'll, we'll send you this presentation, have some additional discussions, and then let the board formulate some questions, but, you know, I think, from my perspective, you know, and this is kind of how the, the structure's already set up, but it's, it's really designed to address the seasonality of our community, make sure that we've got some stability with our rates, so we're generating a certain amount of money no matter what, and that's why we have that base charge, so. It may be a matter of tweaking that a little bit, but not wholesale changing it, and then if you want to try to build in some water conservation, then I think that, I mean, I don't, I don't know if it's going to change behavior, because for the seasonal customers, whether you change the rate or not, they don't care, they're not paying the bill anyway. But regardless of that, I think the idea is that for the higher tiers, you're going to charge more per thousand gallons if you want to encourage conservation, and that was a strategic planning goal.
With the new meters, you can say exactly how somebody's using them.
Yeah, and we plan, I mean, I think they're going to take all that data and model these rate structures, so that if they come up with a new rate structure, they can tell you, okay, Mike Sears, here's how much you're going to pay under this new rate structure versus what we charge today. And they'll be able to know that down to the customer level.
Looking at my app, I've only not used 4,000 gallons once since you put this new meter in.
Yeah.
Every single 4,000 gallons, over billing cycle, so.
I mean, I...
If you don't adjust my tier rates and you adjust my rate up, I might spend less money monthly.
But so, if you, if the base charge right now is, is what it is, and then you personally haven't used but a certain amount, well, there's a lot of customers out there that aren't using any water in the off-season, when their houses are shut down, and they're getting charged a base rate, and so what we're talking about potentially is increasing the base rate.
And businesses.
Because the, the idea is that, I mean, yeah, it doesn't sound fair, because they're not using water, but in the end, our costs are fixed.
Right.
So it sort of argues for increasing the base rate, so we can recover our costs, so we have the ability to service that house, because we don't have control over that house. That house could change ownership tomorrow and become something completely different.
Or a rat goes through the line.
Yeah.
One of our neighbors had a rat eat a lion just this past weekend.
Well, anyway, I think that's, that's the general idea behind all of this, and, again, this is just sort of to make sure that we're on the right track, but anyway, it's a little bit convoluted.
Okay. Well, share the, I would say, share the slides with us, let's get questions back to you, staff. Maybe commissioners have conversations with staff about what your questions are and get some clarity, and then staff can interpret that back to the consultant, and we just kind of maybe skip a step here.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think the, this is the kind of issue, though, where, you know, we could keep it the same, that's probably the safest way to proceed, but then if we make slight changes, what we think are slight changes, they could be big changes to individuals, and we could end up hearing about that.
Did the county just go up on their water rate to you?
The raw water rate we pay?
Yes, yes, they did. But that changes, and we don't know what that is, unfortunately, until like December. So, yes.
So, I mean, you're going to have to base something off of that anyways.
Yeah, we would, if they changed their rates, ultimately, we'll have to look at that.
And our last increase was in '22 or '23?
Our last increase was with the public works financing.
It wasn't this year, but I think it was the year before.
Yeah. And I think we did about a 12% rate increase, so.
Are we done?
We'll come up, we'll send you the presentation, let you come up with some questions, I think ultimately, we could probably ask them to model a couple of different scenarios, and then we can take a look at that.
Okay.
Maybe in person next time.
Okay.
Yes, I would advise that. I think the days of these remote virtual meetings are going to end.
Especially when it's, especially the first time. I mean, if it's a simple, five-minute overview of something, but when it's the full first-time presentation of concept, we probably shouldn't try to do those.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you.